Fakataka te hau ki te uru, fakataka te hau ki te tonga. Kia mā kina kina ki uta, kia mā tara tara ki tae. Ehi ake ana te akura, he tiyo, he huka, he houhui, tihae maureora.
Right, welcome everyone to today's Strategy and Policy Committee meeting. So just please note that the meeting is being live streamed and please let me or the Democracy Advisor know if you intend to leave the meeting. We will have a break at about 10:55, it's always a bit tricky and just, you know, sometimes things change if someone is a bit late. And then we'll have lunch at 12:45. I'm just going to call for apologies now, I do have apologies from the mayor, he's going to just be a little bit late. And councillor Kelvert needs to leave a little bit early on council business. And councillor Wolf also needs to leave a little bit early. Are there any other apologies? No, okay, do I have a second for those apologies? Councillor Fitzsimons, I now put the motion which has been moved and seconded, you can vote. Eyebrow wave. I should also just meet you while we're doing this, we have councillor Rebecca Matthews here via Zoom. Thank goodness for technology, so Rebecca is up in Auckland supporting her parents, her father's, you know, very unwell, so she's doing that. We appreciate you taking the time to come and join us today, thank you. Okay, councillor Rush, would you like to vote on the apologies? Thank you. Let's carry it. Are there any conflict of interest declarations from councillors regarding anything on the agenda? Confirmation minutes, I move the motion that Strategy and Policy Committee approved the minutes of the Strategy and Policy Committee meeting held on the 23rd of June 2020. Having speculated that they'd be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting, do I have a second? Thank you, DP Mayor Free, and now put that to the vote. Yep, I keep an eye on Rebecca over there and they vote for her on there. It's a well-oiled machine now. So that was carried, I think, wasn't it? Yeah. Okay, so we're going to get underway because we do have a very busy day with lots of submissions. And just making sure that we try and keep to time as much as we can. So we'll start, no my Sam Donald, if you'd like to come and give us your submission. So you've got five minutes, we have got the time, is there to help you? But would you like a little reminder at one minute, just to know that that's coming up? If you want to leave time for questions, feel free to. Yes, which page do we, do you have a page number for each of them? We will get that sorted, but... Thank you. Yes, thank you.
So we've been advocating strongly for moving more people with fewer vehicles, including mass transfer transit in form of light rail from the railway station to the airport. Along what has since been adopted as the initially preferred route. Our position is that roads are public space and are primarily intended for the safe and efficient movement of people on freight by whatever means is most appropriate to the situation. And consistent with the declaration of climate and ecological emergency, which must remain front and centre of all of Wellington City Council's decision-making. The distribution of the road space needs to be equitable and comply with the sustainable transport hierarchy which WCC follows. That being pedestrians, cyclists, public transport, moving freight, and then private vehicles. Note that it doesn't have parking at the front of it. This seems to have been perpetuated by a number of individuals in some local media as of late. Looking. Do we manually do that? It's not, I don't think. If we had added parking and to include parking for the movement of freight, it might look more like this. Where there is a need for road space to be allocated to the parking of vehicles due to a lack of public, private, or commercially operated off-street parking options. Priority needs to be given to car share programmes. A well-managed car share programme can take away 10 private vehicles for each car share made available. This is a great opportunity for Wellington where we have major constraints on road space and many users vying for their fair share of it. Under the existing structure of residential parking, car share programmes need to be allowed to use these spaces. A continuation of the residence parking scheme reinforces New Zealand's 20th century mentality that parking a private vehicle in close proximity to one's dwelling is a right. It isn't, it's a privilege. Any individual, household or business that believes they have a right to park a vehicle or invite their customers to park their private vehicles on public space free of charge or below its true cost. Needs to realise that nothing is free, whether that be an initial infrastructure cost, opportunity cost for the loss of a developable or rentable space, or an ongoing maintenance cost to the city. And anyone else who doesn't take up that supposed right to do the same is in fact paying to subsidise that space. On-street parking needs to be priced at its actual cost and not be subsidised by rates. We need to avoid linking rights on-street parking spaces to residential building typologies or the age of construction. Any system that prioritises existing older dwellings in obtaining residential parking permits will lead to pressure on developers to include off-street parking in new developments. Which will add dramatically to the cost of new dwellings whilst making it all too easy for residents to continue with the status quo of ownership of a private vehicle despite other options. The great livable cities of the world aren't great places to live because they make it easy or cheap to park a car. In fact, they do precisely the opposite. Many cities around the world are taking bold steps to shift the balance away from parked cars to allow more space for walking, cycling, scootering, dining and playing etc. Read advance there. At Paterson Architects' Azava Sona project went to great lengths at great cost to prioritise high-quality private communal outdoor space at ground level by allocating all parking underground. Next slide. This isn't a viable solution or a replicable model in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. This example project delivered eight warm, dry, comfortable, light-filled dwellings to replace one damp, dark old one. This level of density needs to be encouraged, not discouraged, without cost barriers for unnecessary on-street parking but access to plentiful on-street car share instead. Spaces and funds can then be reallocated to sustainable people-focused initiatives. That make the city even more livable. With onsite water, storage, productive gardens, bicycle and scooter parking, composting and worm farms. Let's prioritise our road space to make a safer, more inviting, people-centred city. With the aim of reallocation of road space away from parking cars to providing spaces for people. Let's use smart technology and pricing techniques, this may involve increasing costs over time but without time limits, to maintain free spaces at a level that ensures people can find a park most of the time within a short walk distance of where they need to be. There's not just be a follower playing catch-up to Auckland, there's be a bold innovator and leapfrog New Zealand ahead on the world stage with smarter parking policies that will be appropriate for the next 10 to 20 years or more, not just the next few. And while we're at it, let's start to work to remove minimum parking requirements, all of them, everywhere. More people driving makes cities worse. More people walking, cycling, scootering and using public transport makes cities better. On a related note, I just thought I'd leave you with Fit Wellington's draft for a Wellington City Council policy statement on transitor and headed development. Because decisions that council makes around parking today will have knock-on effects for years to come.
Thank you, apologies, I realised I didn't give you a minute warning there, that wasn't very fair, was it? Councillor Ngang does have a question, I'll allow her to ask it, she's very quick.
The design of those houses looks absolutely fantastic. Some of the problems in Wellington is some of that high-density or medium-density housing has been of very poor quality. Just wondering where those houses were?
Cora Boram and Pari.
Oh, those are the Zavos, Zavos, I've never seen them before. And of course the local residents hated them until they went up and now they love them.
Thank you, thank you Sam for coming in today to talk to us. And now I would like to invite Eric Zidavelt from Mivo to come and do your submission. No my Eric? Is Eric here? He's not here yet, not here yet. Okay, well we probably can do the next one because there's a recorded video, can't we?
So he hasn't recorded?
There's no recorded video, Liz? No, sorry, Liz, yeah, she's not done yet. Okay. Is Victoria Carter here? Oh, your Linda's here.
I am indeed.
Ah, you are, you're on here, Victoria, great. Fantastic, so Victoria, what we're doing is you've got five minutes, if you want I can give you a reminder at one minute and just in case there's questions from councillors for you. Sam, okay, would you like that reminder?
Perfect. I'm hoping that it'd be three seconds time for us.
Oh, fantastic, well you can get underway, thank you.
Kiara, car parks undermine the quality of life in our cities and our streets. But I want to congratulate Wellington City on developing what I think looks like it could be New Zealand's leading parking thing. Modern cities don't need parking minimums. And I want to encourage you to not build places for cars but worry more about where our people sleep. And I want to reinforce and encourage you to be brave with your parking policy because you'll reap the rewards. I've promoted the reduction in car ownership for over 10 years. And I know the significance that promises like this can have to make your city better. I've seen it globally. And this is an opportunity to encourage fewer cars in the city. Because for too long, cars have determined our urban planning. All over the world, the cities that we think are great cities have done a great job of removing cars and it's seen an improved social and economic well-being as well as a better quality of life for all of us. And I've just realised I do have a slide that I'm not sure if it's up on your, it's somewhere in the council table. But I also produced a little two-page summary of what I'm speaking to. In it is a very cool little Twitter clip that shows how Amsterdam removed 10,000 car parks and the difference that it made to their city. When cities take positive action like your own with parking, it encourages other forms of mobility. And then when you incorporate back-to-base car share, residents see that it's actually worth sorting without a car. It's back-to-base car share that's been proven to have all the economic, social, health and environmental benefits. And in the research, I think, just some research on it. When parking is too cheap, there's no incentive for people to reconsider whether they need to own a car or whether in fact that many people don't even know how much their car is costing. I want to respectfully submit that you consider putting car share into a higher priority with public transit, cycling and look to creating mobility hubs like the illustrations in on-screen and as are provided. Two ago, the inaugural Car Share Awards led by Move Me, an international mobility agency, and the International Car Sharing Association ranked five planks for the best car share cities. And of course they all have fewer cars and less congestion. I'm not going to read out the planks, but they are provided in my material, but they may help your officers in making certain decisions. If you have the next slide, please. Cities with good range of people combine car share at more than thirty hours. And when residents can see this priority, let's encourage them to reduce their car ownership. And that frees up their own money, which best of all gets spent locally. If residents can see road space for their private car instead of their garage, that is what previous speakers said, the private car owners are paying for. I'd love you to consider measures to reduce the size of your resident population. And I offered some suggestions on that. And I suggested that perhaps you might want to encourage where you want your car share. And people who are present in the area, you look at encouraging car share providers to put car share there. I think this policy's a great start, but it's unfair to me that council would give free or subsidised permits to somebody in the city fringe when you need to use your curb space. For people who live in the city have to pay to park. Just like rubbish, just because you can afford to put out your rubbish and pay for your rubbish bags doesn't make good policy and roads are not the best for us. Again, I'm really impressed at the quality of the thinking that's gone into this policy. Framework and consideration for making Wellington potentially the first city to truly encourage reducing levels of car ownership. Car parks undermine the quality of life in our cities. Kia kaha Wellington and thank you, Charles Tukarero.
Kia ora, thank you for that. Councillors, are there any questions? Thank you, councillor Foo has a question for you, Victoria.
Kia ora, Victoria, and thank you for acknowledging our team's work on the policy, they've spent many years on it. Just, I know that you're based in Auckland at the moment, correct?
I live in Auckland, yes.
Okay. Oh, good, then you might be able to, are there any quick wins you could see that we could really get in place to make a difference? Like, anything different between the two cities, it's obvious.
I wouldn't look to Auckland as a leading example, I'd look internationally. And one of the things that I was really interested in was that Calgary, Vancouver and some of the European cities, the council actively promotes car share as a mode. They don't tell you who to use, just like they encourage walking and cycling. And it's that awareness that's helped residents then understand what is car share and think, hmm, what am I spending on my own car? And start to think differently. Another quick one would be some urban planning tools. Some apartment blocks are being built without any car parks. Or they're being built with a car share car park. It's that thinking that I think will make a real difference to our cities in the future.
Thank you, Victoria. Kia ora, Victoria, thank you very much for your submission today. We've now come to the end of our five minutes, but thank you for zooming in to talk to us. Very much appreciate it. We just need to figure out, because we're mixing this up between Zoom and the room, it's just making sure we know who's where. Do we have? So what we're going to do now is we are going to go to Michelle Rush's video, which we had an email about. So she has recorded her video and I can see that her submission says on the photo page that it's on page 182 of the document. So hopefully you can find that. So we'll play Michelle's video now. You're going to declare a conflict.
Kia ora, Kaita. Thanks for the opportunity to address the committee on behalf of the Environmental Resources Group of the council. I'm Michelle Rush, if I haven't met you before, I've met some of you, so thanks again. So a couple of things just want to reinforce about our parking policy decision. The first is that this policy is really good. It's sound, it's based on really good evidence and it will work for the city. So my first message is please pass it. The hierarchy that's been proposed in it is sound and based on best practice internationally and also from places like Auckland and Christchurch. Both of whom are seeing some successes from a certification. The idea of ensuring that pricing of parking is demand responsive is also a really good one. And putting these two things together will set Wellington up really well for the future. So this policy and passing it tomorrow, nothing changes, but what it means is that every decision you will make from here on in will be able to be made with a really clear framework. With certainty for everybody in the city and it will future-proof Wellington. It's also a way of ensuring that parking, parking decisions are consistent with Let's Get Wellington Moving. Also with the zero-carbon targets that council set for itself.
It feels a bit strange not to say, Kia ora, thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much, Michelle, for your submission. There are two videos. Okay, we'll wait for the next one then, maybe there was a question that she's answering, is there? No, is there not another video? There is another video, okay. Gosh, we're having to be flexible here.
These are the things we suggest to the committee. Firstly is broaden the scope of this parking policy. At the moment, its scope is limited around the parking operations of the city. We suggest the policy needs to be broadened so that it needs to be taken into account by decisions on things like the district plan. And some of the operational parts of Let's Get Wellington and your transport agenda. Secondly, when you're thinking about the pricing, consider that it will be more transparent about the revenue from parking going into direct street improvements. Things like urban amenity, micro-mobility, bike lanes, bus stops etc. So that people can see that where that parking revenue heated is going is actually improving the experience of the residents and citizens. So that's all I've got to say. Good luck and please do pass the policy. As this with both those two core components, firstly parking, and secondly demand responsible parking. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Michelle, again. We do have Hayley. So what we're up to now is we have, from Connect Wellington, we've got Mike Hollings, and I understand is Mike?
Yeah, but I've given my slot to Mike.
Okay, so we'll ask Hayley to do her submission now. Kia ora, mourana Hayley, it's good to see you here this morning, you might just need to unmute. I'm not sure if you're doing that or if...
She's unmuted now.
So Hayley, you've got five minutes and I'll give you a warning just when you're getting one minute to the end so that if there's any questions for you, people can ask questions, so councillors can ask you. The page numbers don't seem to be matching up, I've just looked at the... Well, I just looked at the printed part and the 35 wasn't where what I thought it was. So we will work on that while you're listening to this. But sorry about that, Hayley, we're just getting ourselves sorted, there's lots of mixed media going on here today. So if you'd like to get started with your submission now, that'd be great, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So Kia ora, I'm Hayley, I currently work in public health for the Scream to Up the Mass, yes, working in community health with Mari, this is where I love and help people and families. So I recognise that this will shape what I'm going to say and I think it's more important as well. But in summary, I'm in support of wanting to make the parking policy better. I originally found the concern around the rise of parking increasing of poorer people confusing. Because many of the people that I've come into contact with in the community who don't own a car, or if they do, they're not driving places that require them to pay for parking. Or if they do, they don't live in areas that require them to pay for residential parking. So there obviously be some areas where these people are living and residential parking, what we see there. However, surely there would be some sort of exemption, an exemption and I have a community services card for a discounted parking rate. So from what I've heard, sounds like council users could be in the concern that poor people will not be able to afford increases in parking prices. As an excuse to prioritise their own agenda, again benefiting those who have the most. So we're all aware of concern trolling and from what I'm hearing, it sounds like this is what's going on. The council has often made comments about a change in parking policy that would affect our most vulnerable population. But what I'm going to ask you is how often do you see this sort of population walking around on that damn key? And you don't a lot of the time and that's because the shops that are in these areas are expensive. And the road getting into the city is too difficult for people. So before we pretend that we're prioritising poorer or high-needs populations, I think it's important that we ask who we really are trying to prioritise. I'm not going to remind you about why active transport is good for us. As an active transport myself, I've been through too many times where I've almost been hit by cars on my way to work. When I tell people that I cycle to work, they often reply with, oh, you're putting your risk. And all of this has led me to realising that if we're going to increase the number of people that are using active transport, Wellington needs better options to allow people to do so. Instead of prioritising parking, we need wider pathways that allow for people to walk, cycle or scooter etc. We had a meeting yesterday at work that was looking at ways that we can get high-needs families to play sport. A large barrier for many of these kids turning up is that they don't have someone who can take them to the park or be able to participate. So to overcome this, thinking of ways that we could get more people to the field and park. By improving footpaths and cycle ways rather than prioritising parking spaces, more of our community members can use active transport to get to and from actively safely. And for me, that's real equity. Additionally, many of the people I would see in the community that were a priority population would work, shift work and have limited ability to make time for exercise after working several jobs and looking after their families. If we're able to make active transport a more suitable and safer option for them, I believe that will see real benefits to these people's lives by providing them with ways that they can fit into doing incidental exercise into their day. It's going to see real changes to the outcomes for these people and again...
So we've got one minute, one minute to go. Cool. Kia ora.
I'm not asking for the system to be perfect. I recognize that it's going to take time for changes to be made. But I think that enough times already asked and we're still sitting here talking about the same issues that makes so much sense to change. Currently, those concerned with parking and those who prioritize parking are asking for a bite of the apple. However, they already have the whole apple. A car park is a public space and a car owner should have no more right to this than anyone else. So to summarize, I'm in support of council sending a policy for exam parking space to assist active transport and what's equally.
Kia ora, and we do have one partai, one question from councillor Paul.
Tenaka Hailey, it's yeah, Timothy here. I was just wondering, I really support what you're saying. I guess a thing, the only thing I'm thinking is that when we're talking about poor people and the impact that this policy could have on their lives, I worry about climate change and the disproportionate impact that that will have on poor people, particularly those from the Pacific whose homes are sinking rapidly as well as those from African countries who will be hit the hardest by climate change. But I know that we have done some work on to see if community services cards can be used as a mechanism for more equitable transport options. But I think that wasn't a viable option. So do you have any other ideas or suggestions of how we can look at some other tools or ways of discerning who needs those kind of reductions in transport prices or aside from a community services card?
Just to have to focus. When, in what way is it not working at the moment? Is it that people don't have access to any community services cards? Or the way is the community services?
I think it was that we did some, was it scope into whether people could get discounts with a community services card, but the officers came back and said it wasn't a viable option. And great. Oh, all good, no worries, no worries.
Kapai. Kia ora, Hailey, thank you so much for zooming in to talk to us today. We appreciate you taking the time to do that. Thank you. We now have Eric Zidervelps from Mevo on Zoom. We'll just see if he can pop up on screen. Kia ora, Eric, are you there? Looks like Eric's coming in here. Maureen, Eric, good to see you this morning. Welcome to our submissions hearing process today. You've got five minutes for your submission. And I'll give you a wee little, maybe I'll give you a little wave when we get to a minute to the end of your time, just so that you're aware of how your time goes. If you do want to allow time for questions, then that would sort of be the time to be wrapping up for a question from councillor. But yeah, welcome, thanks for coming.
Maureen, can you hear me? Awesome. So great to be with you. Sorry for the mix-up earlier on. We'll keep our submission fairly quick and keep it fairly focused on car sharing and parking policy. In the interest, we largely support the hierarchy that was put forward and would like to recognize and note the massive change and recognition of our sharing four years ago to today. Phenomenal to see all shares, all the impacts that car sharing's having on us. And then note the small change that we'd be adding to the hierarchy as it was brought up in the submission. So since launching, we now have over 6,000 people using car sharing every day. And of those members, if you look at the peer-reviewed data on research in Cars and Vehicles Network for every private vehicle or for every car share vehicle that's added, on top of that, many of the customers will be aware of...
She's going to be a top-down. Confusing.
...of the carbon savings that are represented with that as well. So for all of the emissions that are emitted significantly less than that of private vehicles that were offsetting 120%, so actually delivering a carbon negative or climate impact. We believe this is very much in line with the city's vision for net zero emissions future, of which it is around 63% is ground transport. And so we're certainly doing our best to paddle on the same direction as everyone on that one. What I would add is, one thing we see in car sharing in Wellington right now is a significant number of our users are in fact Wellington inner-city residents or within what we mean our home zone area where you pick up and drop off a car. Now, a lot of those residents aren't able under the current structure to leave one of the car sharing areas in residence parking. The issue with that that comes back is for those residents, it makes car sharing less viable and less convenient. And for the other residents who also use a residence car parking, that means the demand reduction that car sharing provides. So again, every vehicle put down, ten are taken off the road. It means that more cars fighting over the same residence parking because car sharing is not able to be used in those spaces. So it's a win for, to put car sharing into residence parking, that's certainly a win for car share users. But it's equally, and maybe also a win for car share users as well. So that's, I mean, keeping it simple today, that is paying decent feedback on the consultation. Otherwise, I'd like to say the push towards active transport, push towards all the transport, and the push towards keeping engine running vehicles out of our city is strongly supported by Mevo.
Kia ora, Eric, thank you for that. Councillors, there's time for questions. Councillor Rush, any councillor phone?
Thanks, Eric. So I spent a long time in London and car share was, became, came out in the early 2000s. And I guess there was actually a spot right across the road from where I lived in South Ealing. And the problem I found though was that the car was not always there when I needed it. And when I had to do multiple trips in a day, it actually did tick up to be quite a bill. And as a consequence, it never really became the transformative sort of mode of choice for Londoners despite the ghastly, ghastly traffic that people face there. Have you got some comments on why you think it might be different here in Wellington?
Absolutely, that's a great question. I believe you've also heard from Mevo about it earlier this morning. And so one thing that might be worth clearing up, and I know many of you are across this, but for the audience watching as well, there's a few modes of car sharing, different types. Call it an apple and a micro loft sort of analogy. So there's the back-to-back car sharing. So that's exactly similar to what you're describing, where you have one space and one car. And that car can be moved up and dropped off at the same location. And so when that car is in use, that space is also rendered unusable for others. But it also means it's only for those trips where you pick up, go do what you're going to do, and go back to the same spot. Now, there's also the other mode, what's termed instead of back-to-backs is called pre-floating. And that's the mode we operate. And recognition of Wellington City Council leadership regionally is important here because together, Mevo and WCC were the first city in Australasia to get this off the ground. So that's when you can pick up in one spot and drop off in another. So we think of it a lot more like a cell network. You don't really think about booking in at a time on the cell network to make a phone call. And you don't worry if you're going to miss out on this one. There's just all this coverage. And the same is true with what we're doing. So there's effectively always a car close line, might not be the same one.
That was good, thank you. Yeah, yeah, no, we'll, before finishing now, Eric, we've come to the end of our five minutes. But thank you very much for sharing your perspective with us. We really appreciate you coming today.
Yeah, thanks so much for the time and great to see you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, now I'm going to welcome Rona Carson from Newtown Residence Association. You can come and do your submission. Kia ora, Rona, thank you for coming in today to talk to us.
Thank you.
So you know the drill really well. Would you like a little reminder at four minutes, just that we're coming to a close to the end?
I'll try and keep it down, I'm not sure.
It's tricky.
Right, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, councillor Penner.
Okay. In general, we approve of the objectives of the policy and we approve of the priorities for parking in the different areas. We've got some Newtown specific points that we'd like to just touch on. And we're concerned that our suburban centre is also a key transport route. Rutherford Street through Constable Street to Culberney and on to the airport is a major traffic route. And there are very different parking priorities for key transport routes than there are for suburban centres. But Rutherford Street and Constable Street are at the heart of our Newtown community. And we advocate for these streets to have the parking priorities of a suburban centre. We were interested in the place and movement framework, which is talked about in the policy. And we think that that could be a way forward to look at our streets specifically rather than in general. And we would prioritize place over movement for that. But so long as the framework's developed in consultation with the community as part of area-based planning. When we consider the residential streets, we like the high priority that's given to residential parking in inner-city suburbs such as Newtown. It's well known that there is a great deal of concern about parking pressure in Newtown. We've got lots of cars from out of the area that come and park during the day while their owners are at work. And we've also got increasing number of residents with increasing numbers of cars per household. And we're just running out of room. In the draft policy, talk about where there is high pressure to have the system of short-term parking with residents exemption permits. That's already happening in Columbo Street in Newtown and it works well. And we've been advocating to extend that. So we're very pleased to see that in the proposal. When it comes to the hierarchy for who has eligibility for residence parking permits, we're concerned in case when you decide on a list that's sort of set in stone, we would like to see the ability for it to be fine-tuned for local conditions. And we'd also like to see more emphasis on them being granted on the basis of need. In your draft policy, one of the policy objectives is support access for all. Ensure disabled people, older people, people who are pregnant and people with babies can access car parts throughout the city. And at the moment, it's only operational if you've actually got a mobility parking permit. We'd like to see some work done on a process for granting residential parking permits that reflects that objective. We're also in favor of shared cars being easily available to Newtown residents. We approve of making it as easy as possible for people to live in Newtown without having a car. And in principle, we support Mevo's proposal to allow shared cars to park in residence parking areas. However, as with all aspects of it, we would like to work through the details with area-based planning. We've got another suggestion for car sharing in Newtown. And that is to have car share parks and charging stations in Newtown Avenue. You might know that there's a 56 two-bedroom apartment block going up between Constable Street and Newtown Ave, and that's going to open soon. And there's a bus stop in Constable Street right outside. And we think that if there's car sharing right outside on the other street, there would be more incentive for people to come and live here without needing to have cars. And this, details of this all hinge on area-based planning. And we know that a Newtown parking plan is already in the works and it's meant to be happening alongside Newtown connections. We're just a bit concerned that it'll get bogged down with Newtown connections. Because once it starts concentrating on cycleways, all the other issues are going to get forgotten. So we think there's quite a lot that can be done independently of that. And we'd like it to happen as soon as possible and involving residents and businesspeople and key employers. So, thank you.
Well done, that was awesome timing. This was a bit of a race for you. Thank you. Thank you so much, Rona, for coming in to share your experiences of Newtown with us. We really appreciate your knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Noamai and Melinton, if you'd like to come forward. Anne's here from Oriental Bay Residence Association. Oh, thank you, Linda, that's very helpful. Maureen, Anne, it's great to have you here.
Thank you very much. Hi, hello, Rona.
So what we'll do, Anne, is you've got five minutes. I'll sort of try to catch your eye when it's getting, you know, to sort of around that minute mark just so that you know, because I know when you're presenting, it's really hard to keep track of the time.
Thank you very much. Hope I can do as well as Rona.
Thank you.
Oriental Bay doesn't really fit quite neatly into any of the categories. We're assuming that we come under the category city fringe and inner-city suburbs. And our comments really are on because of that. We support a hierarchy of use for inner-city parking in Oriental Bay for residents. And we want short-stay to have a similar priority. And I'll tell you why. These are for people who come to Oriental Bay either with their families, babies, children, for the beach, or else it's people visiting their elderly relatives. As you know, there are quite a lot in Oriental Bay. And two hours isn't really quite enough. We would hope it could be three hours, which I know is one possibility in your paper. We agree with the proposal that commuters should have a low priority. In fact, we're absolutely amazed at how cheaply commuters can park all day. I don't know if you all realize, they can, for $12, they can spend the whole day in Oriental Bay. And we think you could make a wee bit more money on that one. We don't support rationing of residence car parking to only one space per house that has no off-street parking. And we're not actually sure what that means. You know, a house could have a number of flats in it. And we wouldn't want that to happen. If Oriental Bay is viewed as a key transport route, which of course to a degree it is, we would object strongly to residents having such very low priority. I also wanted to add one thing, seeing I've got you all here. And that is, I do think some of the urban design features are a hazard, having broken my angle twice on those horrible bulges that come out. I don't know if there's a good reason for them on pavements. But I would love it if you would look at them and see if they really are. They're pavements that suddenly you have a big bulge in it when...
You mean like that?
A circular thing. It's, the pavement should be straight and suddenly they go out into the road. Having... Yes, they are quite hazardous as well, I think. Transport, anyway, that's just a by-the-by. Thank you very much. Those are our comments. Are there any questions people would like to ask?
Oh, well done, you did very well, Anne, with your timing there. Councillor Rush.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne, thanks for coming in. I'm just interested to hear your thoughts on Oriental Bay being a commuter route and obviously Evans Bay as well. Is that really what it should be, do you think?
No, we don't think it should be that. It's sort of become because we haven't got the second tunnel, isn't it?
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Penner.
I know it's unproper.
Yeah, just following on from there. Anne, just kind of clarify, your point about households needing maybe more than one car park, then how do you ration, like if then, because at some point it will run out in terms of the amount of space? Like then if some households have three or four, yeah, so how do you?
I don't know, we haven't thought of that one. We will think about it if you'd like us to.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great, we can keep discussing.
Yes, we can come back to you on that one.
Thank you. Yes, you can.
They would get more.
We have a question from Deputy Mayor Frey now, thank you.
Hello, Anne, it's lovely to see you. And thank you for all the help the organizations given us to make, you know, changes, which I appreciate it. With the rationing of car parks, obviously it is going to be a challenge. Would you, what would you maybe take this back to your organization or answer it now? How would you feel about some kind of tiered pricing? So, you know, if you're having a residence park permit for one car, it's at a certain price. But if you need a second one, it might be a bit more expensive. And if you actually wanted a third one, it might be really, really expensive.
I think that that certainly could be looked at, yes. Yes, Sarah, it is one way of looking at it, isn't it? Yes. The question is, is it per house or is it per? The question is, is it per house or is it per owner of, you know? The difficulty comes when some of those buildings are flats, aren't they? That's the difficulty.
Thank you very much, Anne. It was a really helpful submission. I appreciate you taking the time to come in today.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. So now I'd like to welcome, I think, Mike, you're doing the submission on behalf of Linda, are you? Instead of, okay. Oh, thank you. That's very kind of you, Linda. Thank you for coming in, Mike. Welcome, Noamai. So you've heard what the drill is. So I'll try and catch your eye if you're getting to sort of that four-minute mark.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Kia ora tato, kou Mike Hollings, tōkuwengua, ki pukiahu a wenua wana. I'm Mike Hollings and I live in Mount Cook in Thompson Street. As you can see, I'm a senior citizen and I'm a house owner and also an owner of a residential property which has multiple people living in it. I actually am only here to talk about residence parking. And I actually support the increase in the cost of residence parking. I think it's incredibly cheap at the moment. I have the belief, as others have submitted, that parking on the street is not a right. It's actually public space. And therefore, I think that people, it's a privilege more than a right to have. I believe that, I haven't got any ideas about what the pricing should be. But I think the pricing should be aligned to meeting the policy objectives of what the parking policy is, which I would imagine is to reduce the number of private cars on the street, to reduce our carbon footprint, and to give hierarchy to those that have probably the most need. And so for that reason, I had the discussion that was on previously. And the question was asked about differential parking prices for multiple car parks. I support that. I think that if the parking policy does still enable more than one residence car park, I think the second car park should be more expensive and the third car park should be almost impossible to pay for. I do notice too that there will be, the increasing that the cost of car parking may give greater incentives for people to rid their garages of a lot of rubbish and people to park their cars in there. So I think there has to be a price point that actually will give, even myself, at the moment, we're doing renovations in our house and actually, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's in the garage, which means the car can't go in there, as Linda probably can attest to. I think there are issues for prioritising. I think that things like mobility should be a priority. I think that car parking for residents that don't have off-street parking. And I think that priorities for vehicles that are carbon-friendly. And I think I also heard mentioning of things like charging stations being available and car share as well. And I thought that the presentation before about car sharing, I think there's a lot of potential in that, particularly in places like Thompson Street. So that's actually my brief submission.
Great. That's good because we've got a few questions, so.
Have you? Oh, God. I should say that I'm not a parking activist. I haven't ever presented before the council in my 70 years of life, so.
Well, actually, that shows us, that shows us the importance of this to you. So that's very helpful. And thank you for taking the time to do that. Councillor Yang.
So what do you think of the idea, I know on Mount Victoria where a lot of the garages are used as worksheds and all that kind of thing. But of course, the other problem is some garages aren't big enough for the kind of cars people drive these days, which is another problem. What do you think of the idea of saying to people, if you've got a garage, you can't have a residence car parking coupon?
I probably could agree with that. I have a problem with my car not fitting in the garage very easily, or particularly me putting it into the car carriage. No, but it's an incentive for me to get a smaller car. Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor O'Neill has a question.
Kia ora, Anne. Thank you for coming to speak to us today. My question was around whether or not we're utilizing residence car parking spaces well enough, given that council gives like a 95% subsidy on how much that land would normally cost if you were parking on a private, new-owned management. And as someone who might be able to understand the challenges around having a property with renters in it, how could you see our residence parking becoming more equitable, but also more progressive in the way we manage space?
Yeah, well, I'd have to say in the rental properties we have, which has got multiple tenants, I think only two of the tenants actually have vehicles. And they don't need a vehicle necessarily, except their vehicle is, one of them has a vehicle for work. I don't believe that ratepayers should pay for that privilege that that person has because it's a work vehicle. That should be a work cost as far as I'm concerned. But I might not really answer your question because I'm trying to avoid it.
Thank you. Thank you. Kia ora, Mike. Ngama hikiaki i te korero. Thank you very much for coming in today to speak to us. So now we have Regan, who is on Zoom. Kia ora, Regan. Welcome to our hearing submissions. What we're going to do is, you've got five minutes. And I'll give you a wee wave when we get to a minute to go, just so that you're aware of your time and can manage that. And if you do want to allow some time for questions in there, feel free to do that. Thank you. You can start.
Kia ora, kato. Thinking of the opportunity today, and particularly to speak to you remotely, which does make public participation much more accessible, so that's greatly appreciated. I'll dive straight in. And the parking policy itself, I think, is a really good piece of work. And I'd like to acknowledge the council officers, who have done a good job of putting this together. I've made a few points about it in my written submission there. But overall, you've got the fundamentals of the policy right. And I hope you will approve it when the time comes. What I really wanted to talk about today, though, is what next and implementation specifically. This policy really is important. It's the key to unlocking a bright new future for Wellington that's based around healthy communities, equity and mobility, climate change resilience, all that good stuff that you've already got played into plans like Tiata Kura First Zero. I'm conscious of the limited time, so I hope you'll forgive me for being quite frank. I think we have an issue in Wellington that some councillors see themselves more as passive conduits of public opinion rather than active shapers of public opinion. So we're often told things take time and we need to bring the public along with us. But I honestly think that is absolving yourselves of some of the responsibility you have to be active community leaders. And the timing of the adoption of this policy specifically within this triennium provides you with the perfect opportunity to show leadership and help the communities that you represent, many of whom you are hearing from today, make the transition required before the next election. So I'd really like to ask each one of you today to demonstrate collective responsibility for the new parking policy and proactively engage with the communities that you serve to start giving effect to this policy over the next two years. I really have a reach to the converted here. There's plenty of talks available to help you do that. And if you haven't read Dr. Jess Berenshaw's book, A Matter of Fact, yet, you should. If you haven't read the Lothar's related guide to talking about urban mobility and transportation, you really should. And there are many other, there's lots of other help from council offices. There's plenty of other advocacy groups in the space to contribute if you want that as well. I think if you do that, there's absolutely no reason for anybody in the community to be surprised by those changes to parking in the future. They still might not agree. But at the very least, they should be aware of what's happening. They should understand why it's happening. And they should be able to make plans. And if they don't, then I think that's something of a reflection on your leadership. So I'm serious. The last time you called from the Dominion Post to have your car taken outside the local dairy because they're pissed off about losing your car park, I hope you'll rethink about that. It actually reflects on you and your ability to lead your communities through change. I'm not sure exactly how the mechanism on local area parking lands will work. But no doubt, some of you will have the opportunity to do that in the next couple of years. Even if you don't, all of you will already know of the strengths and businesses in your ward who are going to be affected by this. At the very least, I think the key transport routes, which are a key element to this policy, can and should be identified within your ward for the next year or so. I can't understand why that can't happen. My key point is don't wait. I encourage you all, get out there, be community leaders. Yes, it will be difficult. Yes, it will cause a small minority of residents and businesses some pain. You're going to hear from some of those people today. But if you start now, two years is more than adequate transition time. And gives you enough time to demonstrate to the majority that you can deliver on this policy.
I'm going to end this, what I really wanted to say. I'm not sure how the time's going.
Yeah, I gave you a wee wave, but it is quite hard to see when you're on Zoom. Ngama hikiaki i te wero. Thank you for your challenge to us. And we do have a question from councillor Rush, if you're.
Thank you. Sorry, I thought we were out of time. So I am a little bit confused because you mentioned that you felt that some of us are passive conduits of public opinion, not leaders, and that we needed to go out and engage in our community. I recently engaged in my community with respect to the removal of over 150 car parks on Evans Bay Parade. Got a very strong message that they didn't want that. The dairy owner, Hatai, is very upset about car parks being removed in front of his dairy. So are you saying that I should impose my own moral thinking on those individuals? Or should I be engaging and reflecting my community's wishes?
I'm wondering how we even got ourselves in the position where there was that reaction at that time. I think everyone could be a lot more proactive about managing those sorts of issues. The piece of road we're talking about here is literally between two other cycleways that are being constructed at the moment. How does it come to be that in 2020, any resident or business in that area can be surprised about what's coming? That cycleway was first consulted on at least a year back as 2020. I will give you credit for the fact that the invading streets proposal, the trial, might have earned a little surprise. But nobody should be surprised about what's coming. And that's what I'm saying. Get out there and manage this a lot more proactively. And if you don't do that, and if incidents like that keep happening, that is a direct reflection on you as a councillor. You've got plenty of lead time on this parking policy to make sure that by the time we need to decide to have a say about who sits around this council table, we've got a very clear idea about who's serious about delivering on this and who isn't. There's your answer.
Kia ora, Regan. Very articulate. And those resources are very good. I just bought the book. So it's great to see that people are being informed. We are going to skip now to Callum, oh, sorry, thank you. We're going to skip now to Callum McMenamin, who is here. He was going to be doing his submission a bit later, but he's said he's okay to do it now. So thank you, Callum, for being flexible. We've just had a few people pull out this morning, so we've got a bit of spare time. Thank you. You probably know the drill because you've sat and listened through them. So I'll give you a wee bit of a wave at one minute to go.
Sure, okay. Kia ora, kato. I realise that our car parking policy affects far more than just the way we park cars. It impacts our urban design and transport on many levels. It impacts our potential for more cycle lands, our pedestrian infrastructure, our public transport, and our zero-carbon city goal, which we need to meet really soon. And what makes a city good is its efficient use of space, and Wellington knows that. And on-street parking is possibly the most inefficient use of space imaginable. And I believe an efficient use of space simultaneously makes humans happy and makes our environment happy. We use on-street parking to store cars when nobody is using them. It is just storage space for things we don't need. To quote Wellington resident Kate Pearce, "Let's not build places for cars to sleep when some people don't have that." I feel the parking policy is very passive. It responds to demand instead of shaping it. It's very operational. Why can't our parking policy be proactive in changing our city? Actively reduce on-street space used for car parking. Make the green space, make the trees, make the public transport lanes, make the cycling lanes, make the wider footpaths, make the space for humans to be happy. Make the pedestrian eyes golden mile and make the commitment to being a zero-carbon city. And make these decisions before the climate takes away our power. Make these decisions so we can lead and show other cities the way forward. Mother Nature will not show us kindness in the future if we do not act kindly in the present. 378 human beings died by car in 2017. 377 human beings died by car in 2018. 352 human beings died by car in 2019. How many times must we be shown the outcome of the pattern? Those people are involuntarily sacrificed year after year by our society, which has deemed their lives an unfortunate cost for cars. To imitate David Longy at the Oxford Union debate, "I can smell the gasoline on the breath of those intoxicated by the car. It is a substance that clouds judgment, and it clouds us in exhaust." Unfortunately, gasoline, like all addictive substances, is highly damaging to our society and our earth. It numbs the pain we feel when we've got inadequate transport infrastructure. To quote some poetry from Kate Tempest that captures my feelings on this, "Couldn't we be doing this differently? Now, I don't have the answers, but there are still things to say. And I stare out at my city on another difficult day and I scream inwardly, 'When will this change?'" "None of this was written in stone. The current's fast, but the river moves slow, and I can feel things changing." Thank you.
Oh, Kia ora, that was very articulate.
Any questions?
Lovely to have a wee poetic submission this morning. Thank you. And we do have a question from Deputy Mayor Frey.
Thank you. And I did appreciate your passion. And I've always been an advocate since I came on council for more cycleways. Everyone knows that. But what I'm concerned about is my people that I represent live a long way from the central city. And I will take out car parking, but that needs a good bus system. What will the people of your generation who are so articulate about removing car parks do to actually lobby the regional council about the bus service, affordable and convenient bus services? That's my challenge.
Well, I'm quite new to Wellington and I've been very confused by the system of having two councils, one managing the bus system and the other is a road controlling authority that controls the lanes for them and stuff like that. I think it's quite a confused system. And perhaps the two councils need to have a more collaborative approach to controlling the bus system. Is that crazy?
That's ideal, but I think we get so many more people submitting at this table than actually go to submit at their table. And kind of my challenge, I guess, is there's another table in this transport space.
I'll go bother them too.
Councillor Rush.
Thanks, Callum. So, I mean, I live in Rosedale. My parents live in, Mike and I, I've got two of their grandchildren, which I'd love to give to them more often. I mean, at the moment, I, on a weekly basis, travel up there with them. And we spend some time for lunch on a Sunday and so forth, and that's very good. And I just don't think that would happen if I was relying on public transport. So is there a space in your world for a car in order to take families to get together, to go to long distances, to drop kids at sport? I mean, I'm playing rugby tonight. If I have to walk there, it'll take me half an hour, half an hour back if I can walk. So, I mean, what, I suppose where I'm coming from, Callum, is that we all celebrate measures to decarbonise. There are, you know, large complications. I mean, is it an absolute for you?
Have you got a past idea? Have you got a question?
It started with, is there an absolute for you? Was a hint there.
So let him answer it.
Okay, I get what you're, I get what you're saying. Yes, it is absolute. You are correct that you won't be able to achieve the things, your transport objectives, using public transport as we know it currently. It must improve in order to meet the needs of the citizens.
Yep, in car sharing. Are there any other part time? We do have a few minutes if there are any other questions. You have been very articulate this morning, Callum. Thank you very much for coming in and for your korero and for your challenge to us. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next submitter is still not actually due to be submitting yet and is just trying to find somewhere to park. That is why Zoom's really good. So we will just... So we will just break for morning tea now. The morning's been a little bit different for a few people pulling out. So we'll break for morning tea and we'll come back at 11 o'clock.
Okay, so we're going to get underway. Thank you for your patience. We made it a little bit longer because we've had some people pull out and we just didn't want to end up having another break straight after having a break. So I'd like to now ask Rabia from National Council of Women of New Zealand to come forward and she's got Sonia and Vanessa with her this morning. So I'll just explain to the councillors that you may notice that everyone is having five minutes today and that's because we had so many people wanting to submit and we had a restricted time sort of zone that we could fit it in and we decided that was most important to get as many people to come as possible. So that was the way that we managed that. So five minutes does make it a bit of a challenge to get all of your points across, but kia kaha, give it a go. If you do want to allow time for questions, I'll give you a wee bit of a catch your eye at four minutes to let you know that you're at that point, but the clock is also up there. So yeah, feel free to get started. Yeah, okay. Oh, it's done. Okay. Kia ora, salaam aikum. My name is Rabia and I'm a secretary for the National Women's Council of Wellington and I've got Vanessa and Sonia with me today. So we're just going to touch on three key areas of feedback. Proposed objectives from accessibility and public transport and eco-friendly point of view, proposed principles and a pricing approach. The submission is not a reflection or aligned with the NCW NZ policy. Views are expressed here. The views expressed here are based from attendees who attended the Wellington Woman Want 2020 Zoom session. The proposed objectives, the initial statement, objectives look thorough and comprehensive. However, there is a need for more of a breakdown, e.g. safe movement. What does that mean and for who? And what will it look like? For accessibility, there was suggestions around access for all. It's very broad. Does this consider disability and the wide range of disabilities or mobility issues? What about people who are immunocompromised during flu season? Participants had a high trust in the number of women councillors at WCC. Their assumption is they will consider issues on transport regarding childcare, family and accessibility for pregnant persons. It is not safe for women if they must travel further to get to their vehicle, especially at night. Parking and CBD, more accessibility for elderly and those who have different mobility issues. They can't always utilise public transport and some may need to be closely, some may need to be close to critical amenities such as hospitals. For public transport and eco-friendly, there was a need for more public transport. Adding bus, adding more bus services doesn't help if they aren't available at the right time or areas and are unreliable. Sorry, give me one second. Just lost my point. A more priority given to electric cars, car shares and carpooling ahead of taxis and rides, ride shares such as Uber. Large support for being an eco-friendly city through higher, higher priority given to, towards residential spaces if they have one car per household or an electric car. More encouragement is needed towards people having private cars. How can this be achieved? Affordability of public transport was a barrier. The prices keep going up, but not the quality of the service. Proposed principles from agenda lens perspective, is it fair to pay for the whole day? We want to encourage people to work more flexibly. Full day parking does not make sense, especially for those who do school pickups and drop-offs and work part-time. So many workers, often women, who need, who only need to park for four to six hours. Coupon parking used by local residents, could this be redistributed to disabled or elderly people who regularly come into town? Especially important for immunocompromised people who can't use public transport. Consider more sharing initiatives to be more effective. Cars in areas such as cars, parking, ride shares, sharing parking with taxis. Suggest developing an app letting people know when car park share, car parking spaces are available or a pre-booking system. Prioritisation given to those with high needs and more balance on private parking and cycle ways required for mobility issues. Pricing approach, more thought needs to be put into accessibility and disability to determine parking spaces and pricing. For example, make parking in the outskirts of the city such as Westpac Stadium more attractive to free up parking for people with accessibility issues into the city centre. Many noted that parking is expensive in Wellington and a need for more free zones as a deterrent compared to the Hart and Porirua. Some mentioned bringing back parking free on weekends as ventures and shopping trips have become more expensive with parking costs, which discourage, which discourages people into the city and people would have more disposable income, which would allow more room. More, oh sorry, which would allow room for much needed and needed revenue. Others advised pricing fees stopped people taking their time into the city, whereas free parking encourages people to take their time as there is no urgency to leave. This prevents others from coming into the city as there is not enough space for them to park. Areas of high demand, how is that defined? Business district? And perhaps this is not the right factor to determine pricing. Oh, that's it for us.
Kia ora, well done. We've got a few questions, but we'll just see how we go timing wise. Councillor Pennett, you can ask.
Thank you very much for coming in. Just briefly, are you comfortable with the general policy direction that we are trying to get people to think more about their transport choices in part to fight climate change?
Hi, Aouna, Councillor Pennett, sorry. There was encouragement for more public parking, not more public parking, more public transport options. But a lot of the people that did attend the session do have mobility issues or were elderly and the concern is for them that there is this general push towards more public transport. But have we thought of what is going to be needed for them as well? So there does need to be some private up parking available for people that have accessibility, immunocompromised. It was felt there wasn't enough of a disability lens applied to the general parking policy. There was a big push from the younger people that did attend and some of the groups that we do need to have more public transport options. But it was felt that there wasn't quite the right balance. This is just for the Zoom meeting that I facilitated.
Kia ora, we'll have just one more question. I'm Councillor O'Neill.
I think they've already answered my question. You're good.
Okay, well then we can allow Deputy May for your question. I was just interested in your comment, cycle ways need to be traded off with accessibility. I think that someone said that. Could you just elaborate a little bit more?
I think that was a big concern from the people that did attend this session. So again, we're reflecting the views of the people that attended. Is that that while it's great having these options of cycle ways of more public transport, which people are in support of, the people that aren't in the room, that, you know, won't be able to make it into town because they have mobility issues and I'm one of them. What are the options for me? Because public transport is not something in a post-COVID world, I feel too comfortable taking anymore. And there are people that are elderly that feel, you know, we don't want to be, you know, we're in support of public transport, but we no longer feel safe taking those options. So those considerations, that does need to be a balance. That's where it's coming from. But again, this is not reflective of our policy and it is only reflective of the attendees that attended.
Ngama hikiakoto, i te kurrira, i te neira. Thank you for coming in and sharing your kāraro with us today. All right, so now we will move on. We have the next few people attending via Zoom. So our person next is James Clark. Page seventy-six. We've got some page numbers now, so yeah, I'll try and remember to tell you the page numbers before they come up. So James, no mai, welcome to our submission hearing today. And so what we're going to do is you'll have five minutes. I'll give you a warning when you get to four, just so you're aware of where you're at with your timing. And if you want to, you know, stop around there to allow for questions, that would be great.
But thank you so much for coming in today and talking to us. Kia ora.
Thank you, kia ora, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. And apologies, I can't actually be in the room. I came down with a bit of a cold yesterday, so I am staying at home. So I'm a born and bred Wellingtonian. I'm currently a partner at Deloitte, working with large organisations to help them improve their operations. So I'm in and around town a lot, going between different buildings, travelling around, bus walking, occasionally on the bike. So I'm pleased to see the council putting forward the parking policy as proposed. I will note, I've been disappointed and frustrated by a series of recent transport consultations that don't seem to have progressed smoothly. Hopefully that this will not be another one of those. I had the opportunity recently to travel up to Auckland for work, which is a bit of a novelty given our recent circumstances. But it was quite striking how much they had the progress they've made in the central city, both with permanent changes to street layouts such as in Fort Street and High Street, but also recent temporary changes. And it drove home to me that Wellington doesn't seem to be making much progress despite a lot of talk. And I've always been able to talk to my Auckland colleagues about how lucky we are down here. I find that's getting harder and harder. And it's a shame because Wellington does have a great business culture in the central city, based around the proximity that we all have to one another in different buildings, the ability to meet in cafes or in bars after work for a drink, to access local amenities and to do things together. But that's really important to me, not just to do my job around town, but as a person enjoying the city and connecting with others. And I find really that the biggest source of friction within the city is the amount of space taken up by cars creating these dangerous and unpleasant sort of chasms through our city, making it harder for people to get around. So I'm really keen to see us maximise what Wellington has in terms of proximity and the mix of people and activities that we can have within the central city, but also, you know, in our wonderful suburbs, as they are by geography. And I feel there's an opportunity here. I overall support the parking policy and in particular the reference to the hierarchy. My main concern is that either we're not going far enough and allowing the opportunity for no real change to actually be made, or that the policy won't be actively used or enforced to actually drive a real change in the city as we've seen other cities around the country do. So in terms of working and living in and around the city, not to mention our climate obligations, I support the policy, but I really urge the council to use it as a lever to actually make some positive change in the city.
Kia ora, thank you, James. Do we have any questions, councillors, for James? Councillor Pannett.
Thanks, James, that was great. Just given your background, do you have any sort of understanding around the economics of, around parkings to make those positive changes in terms of meeting our climate obligations? Just wondered, as an off chance.
I am not a columnist, I'm afraid. I do technology and business change, it's really my specialty. But Deloitte is a big place and many of my colleagues would be very happy to talk to you.
Love to hear and also any thoughts about business change at some later point, that'd be great, thank you.
Kia ora, it's worth trying, isn't it, councillor Pannett? Thank you very much, James, we've come to the end of our time now, but thank you very much for zooming in and I hope that you feel better soon. Thank you. So now we have Jill Ford, who's also coming via Zoom. So kia ora, Jill. No, that's not Jill. Kia ora, Jill, that is Jill. Kia ora, moryna.
It's going to be a slideshow for you, just, you know, something completely different from there. And here you go, and I'll try and remember to say next, so if my time could be, you'll get a little more time.
Cool, thank you.
This is the last time you'll hear from me because I'm over this. As we all know, Wellington's had an increase in population and we've had a lot more cars. This increases congestion, unfortunately it also reduces choice. Next. Parking has been shown, antidotefully, just around anywhere in the southern and eastern suburbs, but also internationally, that it encourages people to drive more. And in fact, according to Oslo, parking facilities triple the likelihood of car ownership. Parking, a whole load of free parking just normalises parking and gives permission to people to buy a car and park. Next. As a result, we get this mess. On-street parking directly competes for road space. It causes more congestion. It causes public transport to run more slowly. It makes it dangerous for cyclists and it's slower for walkers because our whole infrastructure on-road is based around getting cars moved. Next. So we have to reduce traffic if we really want Wellington to be more livable and more sustainable and just make it a nicer place to live. Next. Free parking is also unfair. Why should everybody's travel be slowed down and people then forced into modes of transport or into danger they don't want? When public transport doesn't run properly, when it's too dangerous to cycle or too fast to walk, people get in their cars. Parking and its cars is also expensive. Next. So the choice, here's an example of evidence, this is your Trojan horse, Terry. It reduces space for other transport choices. This is Coromandel Street at 4pm. All the parking, all the traffic makes it less safe and less convenient to walk. Next. This affects lower income. I've got neighbours on either side, it's reasonably high income, they've all got two cars, one gets parked on the road. Driving is expensive. Not only to the individual, but to the greater good because wear on here on roads by cars is much greater than a bicycle or pedestrians on pavements. This causes increase in waits. Also, the infrastructure has to be increased. We have to have more traffic lights, more roundabouts. So the whole excessive parking makes everyone suffer. And if we were all, if it was priced at the real cost, a lot of people wouldn't purchase. Next. But less parking actually benefits everyone. If you need to drive, you're going to be able to get there more quickly. So you're less wasted, less of your day is wasted. Limited mobility, not everybody who is with a disability can actually drive. In fact, an awful lot of people with disabilities can't drive, so they rely on public transport or they have to get other people to move them around. We can address public parking in the city centre for people with mobility by providing more disabled parking. Next. It's also a hell of a lot healthier because children can start walking to school or cycle to school independently, which helps parents. It's safer for the elderly to walk the shops because we can alter the traffic management in terms of traffic lights. So there's more time to walk across. It's also a hell of a lot healthier. You're less likely to be overweight and you're less likely to get respiratory problems. Next. It also benefits retailers. I don't know how much more research you guys need to show that everywhere in the world where we've had more walking and more cycle ways, retail has benefited. Next. So less parking makes it better for everyone. Next. Globally, scrapping car, car, car parking is the latest trend. We are continuing to build more and more housing, and it's going to happen up my street apparently, with parking. This again, normalises driving. In southern suburbs where I live, we've had a major increase in impound housing, notably absent in northern suburbs. Where Wellington City Council is allowing homes without parking, you are failing to reduce the park-on-street parking to enable better public transport and better active transport. So you're limiting choice. There's congestion, the bus is full, public transport can't run in time, it's dangerous for on bikes and it's slower for walkers.
We're just coming to the end of your time now, Jill, so if you'd like to wrap it up.
Okay, this is what I'd like to see changed. I'd like to see residents-only parking extended to eighty-five percent of the street. Limited parking being one-twenty like you have in Tinnapori. And the cost for resident parking increased because it's ridiculously low at the moment, but have more flexibility for paying for people on low income. You pay for a second permit, you can purchase guest passes for tradies. And we basically have residents-only in all residential areas and in the main arterial routes getting into the city centre. In most cases, no parking. And no private vehicles on-street parking in the central city, increased disability to three, et cetera.
Great. Thank you, thanks Jill for zooming in today to have your koriro with us. We really appreciate you taking the time to come and share your thoughts with us, thank you. Okay, so now we have Sarah Clark, who is on Zoom. Yes, yes, Zoom, sorry, Zoom, Sarah. Yeah, Sarah is here with Chris Wick Valley Residents' Association. So Sarah, you have five minutes. I'll just let you know when you're getting close to the end of your time. If you do want to allow for questions from councillors, it needs to be within that five minutes. Thank you, yes, we can, thank you. Oh, Sarah's submission is on page ninety-one.
My verbal submission today will focus on the matters particularly relevant to Northland, which is the area that the Chris Wick Valley Residents' Association represents. And I would say upfront that our overarching position is that we agree in that Wellington must prioritise active modes of transport and public transport. And I would include car share in this, and so we do support that. Northland, we would characterise as a city fringe suburb with touches of outer residential, I think. We agree broadly with the priority that you have in the policy, with the highest priority being for residents and car share, I'll include car share within that, for bus stops and for the safe and efficient movement on footpaths and roads. There's something in the policy called urban design features, I don't really know what those are. But certainly for residents, car share and bus stops, we support policies that prioritise those. There's three major issues that Northland faces and neither, none of them are particularly, particularly major at the moment, but they're certainly increasing. The first, and it's the biggest issue really, is the increase in commuter parking, particularly around the Northland and Corori tunnels. Rara, Crescent, Northland Tunnel Road, Keta Street, those areas, they're particularly affected. And this has been exacerbated since the changes to the bus system. Really, the whole area in the valley, the Appleton Park, Chater Street Valley is a park and ride. And that ripples out on both sides and really needs some improvement. Ideally, more buses clearly, but there needs to be some more park and ride facilities. The second thing is we should be in periods of high and intense activity at Northland Village, which I'm sure you know is a takeaway destination on a Friday night in particular. This is a high use and high turnover, but it's also on the major road in the suburb and it has a mid-road or in-road bus stop. It's not a unique problem for Northland, they're similar in other suburban centres all over Wellington, but it's definitely in need of some fine tuning. And finally, there's other issue for Northland is I guess our narrow winding roads, many houses without street parking. On some streets, but not too many, there could be problems for emergency vehicles. I think you could probably talk to the stuck or the rubbish truck drivers and they would tell you exactly where those problems are. Residents' parking in Northland is not really a problem except for where it intersects with the demand for commuter parking. And that is the thing that I think is increasingly encroaching into Northland. So what do we want for a policy or a parking management regime? The first thing I think is we definitely need an area-based approach. We need to look at the whole area and the potential effects from changes in adjacent areas. So that certainly means that any changes that are done in the Chater Road, Appleton, Appleton Valley around commuter parking, that ripples out to Northland, I'm sure it ripples out to Tinnapori as well. But that needs to be considered. And the second thing is that any parking management regime needs to be developed in consultation with the locals. We are the people who walk, bus, cycle and drive on these roads every day. We know the quirks, we know the places to pull in and we know the places where the traffic goes either a bit too fast or as Keta Street's a classic example of that. And where the pinch points are. This information doesn't just come from car sales. And I think talking to the residents is absolutely crucial.
Just coming up to one minute.
Is safety. And we really want safety for all roadways. It's not just cars and vehicles, but extends to pedestrians as well. And this must be an outcome of any changes to parking policy or changes to management. A review of parking really got to go hand in hand, I think, with a review of speed limits. Whether a narrow roads, resident parking or roads made narrow through parking by either short term or long term, then speeds need to be reduced. We have had previously had discussions about this in Northland, about extending the thirty kilometre an hour zone through Northland up to the school. It's something that I think needs to be considered. It's not, it's not a huge problem, but it absolutely needs to be considered in any area-based policy that management regime does. And that's about it. I think there's other points made from the online submission and the written submission, but happy to have any questions.
We've actually just run out of time for questions, I'm sorry. It's a very, very quick time period to have to do your submission within. But thank you so much for joining us today to share your thoughts and your experiences with us. We really appreciate that. Thank you. Noma, we've got John Milford and I understand you've got Fergus Grenfell with you. So they're both representing the Wellington Chamber of Commerce today. And so you've got five minutes and the clock will hopefully remind you, but I'll give you a bit of a wave when we get to a minute to let you know that we've started to run out of time. There may be questions.
Hopefully that's not out of my time. Good morning, councillors. I'd like to introduce Fergus Grenfell. Fergus is one of our policy advocacy team and he'll actually be making the submission today as he worked on it. So I shall be quiet and not say anything unless required at the end.
One hundred and sixty-five for councillors.
Kia ora, while we commend councillors' future planning, we are disappointed that just five minutes have been allocated today. We trust you have each read our submission. The chamber supports a multi-modal city. Prioritisation of parking on key routes must be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, not a blanket approach. Thornton Key has almost four hundred parks and Lampden forty, but your policy says parks are unlikely to be accommodated on both. These routes serve different purposes, they should be treated this way. Loading zones are critical for servicing businesses. The Golden Mile team have highlighted the way that they backlog and cause congestion. Your issues report found that loading bay demand will increase. We need more space allocated for these, not less or none. Make data-driven decisions. Your own reports and surveys can tell you things like, A, being able to find a park is the most common parking problem in Wellington, seventy-one percent. B, higher occupancy results in increased congestion from cars searching for parks. C, people will search for a new park or pay more in response to parking restrictions or unavailability. Sixty-five percent for shoppers and seventy-five percent for commuters. D, there are just seven parks per one hundred inner-city jobs. Auckland offers seventeen and Christchurch twenty-three. E, of those that drive to the city for shopping and entertainment, they are four times more likely not to go than to use alternative transport. And F, nearly thirty thousand cars enter the city every day. But there are just twenty-nine thousand. thousand parks. We are unconvinced this information is being considered. Better traffic flow, some pedestrianisation and quicker bus access will be great for the city, but parks will still be required. We support more off-street parking to allow for the city's growth. Metering and parking fine revenue was worth twenty-two million last year. The city needs to fund its projects, so council assets must be fully utilised. We support dynamic pricing based on optimal occupancy and reduced congestion. Wellington needs sequence changes. At present, public transport is at or exceeding capacity during peak times. Both trains and buses can be unreliable, which we've witnessed this morning, and your survey suggests little appetite to switch the car for alternatives. Wellington must speed up infrastructure improvements and move sequentially as car park reprioritisation occurs. We recognise the need to reduce emissions, encourage modal shift and make the city more user-friendly. However, changes must be practical, pragmatic and sequenced to make for minimal impact. We welcome questions.
Kiota, well done for your timing there. We have a question from councillor Kelvert.
Thank you. And we've been hearing, you know, comments about, well, we don't need the parking to sort of ensure that, you know, our business community survives, our retail community survives, people will find alternative ways. But I have to admit, I went out to Queen's Gate on the weekend because I could get a park and I got all my shops and didn't have to worry about how long I was there. I mean, have you, from a chamber perspective, can you, can you just give us an idea of, if we didn't provide parking at the moment for, you know, in particular our CBD, retail and business sector, what would that do?
I think we certainly saw that concern with the recent temporary proposals that were put forward and the pushback from people on Evans Bay and throughout the city. And we certainly heard from members as well that that was a concern. We do also recognise that NZTA's twenty-fifteen report suggests that some pedestrianisation or car park removal can be beneficial to businesses. But there are caveats on that, that the streets adjacent to those areas need to provide for good occupancy levels and access for people. The streets adjacent to Lampden Key are already at eighty to ninety per cent capacity throughout the day, and the current proposals are looking at shifting loading zones into those areas, which is just going to exacerbate a problem. So the space for businesses, for people to park outside them is important, and yes.
Councillors, I'm just, there are quite a few questions. What I'm going to ask is that you make your question quite brief. There's a lot of, we're having a lot of lead-in to our questions, so if you can just ask the question and then we'll get more through. So Deputy Mayor Free.
Do you see a place for more car parking buildings? And how might that happen?
One of the benefits of getting older is remembering that Wellington City used to own a lot of car parking buildings and actually exited them. If they still owned them, then this would make this transition much easier.
Thank you. That was a very good brief answer to councillor Young.
I'm just pretty interested in your figure of thirty thousand cars into the city every day, because one of the stats that I've always heard and used is that half the cars that come into the city are just trying to get to the other side to get out of the city. So in other words, they're going to Kandada or the Hut. So do you have the, you have the entry figures, do you have the egress figures? Because you're implying that they're all sticking in the central city, and I don't think they are.
I do not have those figures.
That's okay. I should have gone to David Jones.
Sorry, just to add to that. Nor do the authorities who are making recommendations, so NZTA, et cetera, they don't know the answer to that question either.
Okay, we're just going to keep moving with the questions. Councillor Sparrow, you can ask a question. Did you still have one? I'm sure you're very good at being brief with your questions.
If you made, you referred to four times more likely not to go, I didn't catch the whole statement there, that was if parking wasn't, was reduced to...
Sure, so there was a survey in the end of twenty nineteen, got two thousand two hundred and twenty-five responses from Wellingtonians. And a question was asked, if parking restrictions were put in place or it became unavailable, what would people that come to the city for shopping, leisure or entertainment do? And eight per cent said that they would use alternative transport, thirty-two per cent said that they would not bother.
Thank you. Councillor Conde.
Why do you think we don't have more private parking buildings getting built in the city? As we're going, as we're having more of this reduction of on-street parking, is there not a private market to deliver on these parking services that seem to be in such high demand?
Given the profits that are made by a certain parking operator, I would support your view, but of course you need to have the locations to be added to that. Flatland is challenging in the city centre.
Thank you. Councillor Young, just wait. Councillor Penna, quick question.
So you want rates to be used to pay for private car parking buildings, so how much would you like the rates to go up? You want, you would like us to own car parking buildings, so how else are we going to...
I didn't say you should own them. What I suggested to you, if you still had ownership of those car parking buildings to efficiently manage the arterial routes and the solutions for walking and thing, you could have been able to manage that far easier than you can at the moment. No, you don't. So...
We're not going to debate, but that was his point.
But that's the challenge, and if you don't do this in sequence, you run the risk of actually disenfranchising people to come into the city. That's the challenge.
Thank you so much for coming in, John and Fergus. Thank you, Fergus, for your articulate submission today. It's really well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kiota. So we have from Johnsonville Community Association, we have Tony Randall here, but we also have Darren, and I think we've got Larry also on Zoom. So we've got good representation from Johnsonville today. Thank you for coming in. So you do have five minutes. It's a bit, it's a bit hard today. We had lots of people wanting to talk, so we had to think of how we could get as many people through as we could. So it's a bit of a challenge. I'll give you a warning, sort of close to one minute to go, to let you know where we're at. There probably will be questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And yes, Darren is president of the JCA, transport spokesman, so I'll be doing the submission. So first of all, JCA does support elements, large elements of the policy, and especially the bus priority support, in terms of prioritising that. It's very, it's our big alternative mode is buses. But there are some disappointments. The parking policy does not really address increasing parking supply, and that's a big problem. The, it's not even an objective. The objective that was outlined says you're going to manage what you've got, and that's really not adequate. City Grace Strategy says we're going to get fifty to eighty thousand more people, and a lot of them will likely drive into, if, you know, to work additional work, the growing work in the CBD. A lot of that growth in residence, residents is going to come from the west and the north, especially North Wellington, we are the major residential growth area. And so it's going, the lack of parking is going to affect our area more than anywhere else as we all compete. That also segues to the demand pricing question. I don't, the JCA doesn't support, sorry, JCA doesn't support demand pricing while you also have a way of increasing parking supply, otherwise it just becomes a way of exhorting more money without having a mechanism to respond, to put parking in where the demand is highest. The other, so also, different areas. A lot of this is pre-packaged, this setup of priorities, but different areas really need different hierarchies. We have different roads and different demands. North Wellington, for example, has the highest ownership of company cars. And also we've got largest area which, of people who don't work in the CBD, who work in the Hut, and twenty per cent of the people going down the Rongar Gorge are actually heading to the Hut Valley from the Johnsonville, North Wellington area. Last, but certainly, I think, the most important element is that there is really no connection between this policy, which is focused on the street parking, that is on the roads that city council manages, and the off-street parking, which is covered by the district plan. There's no connection between this parking policy, which, you know, is prioritising away from commuter parking and away from residents' parking, to the area where it should be addressed, which is the district plan, and having off-street parking and private parking. And that's a very, very big gap. In Johnsonville, we've suffered that. Even when we took the city council and won the right to have multi-unit developments, have to have a parking policy, the city council continuously and under a non-notifiable basis gives exemption to that policy for building multi-unit developments that don't have enough car parks. And so as a result, our streets, which, you know, are getting as crowded as anywhere else in the city. And so that connection, this has to be done together, because the fact is, you know, if you're in an area and building an additional house in an area that's got residential parking, off-street parking is a must. Surely, it's a must. And yes, close to the city, sure, active modes are viable, but we're ten kilometres out and a hundred and fifty metres up, and active modes to go to the CBD are one per cent. Okay? So car parking, so different areas need different results, and that's not very strong on it, but also it needs to be joined on the district plan, and that's not there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have a couple of questions. So councillor Rush and councillor Conde.
Thanks very much, guys. So can I just understand, be a bit clear, that the, that you're saying that the priority, which I think, you know, starts with pedestrians and so on, really is too much of a straitjacket and too much, too generalised to apply everywhere? There needs to be some customisation. Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly right. And so for our area, bus priority is more important than cycling and cycleways. Buses are a very big mode in North Wellington, and of course, most of the residential area growth is going to be in areas that are served by buses. So we need bus priority top, cycling later. But other areas, we might be walking over cycling, and other areas, we're cycling, you know. Newtown, for example, is a classic for cycling support. So that has to come through more strongly.
Thank you. Councillor Conde.
So if we're going to do more about bus priority, we obviously need to create some space on our streets, and that's one of the things that this parking policy is about. What do we do to prioritise space in our streets? If we want more space for buses, we need to take off some of the parked cars. So that's the fundamental issue here about that we're not looking at any way of increasing supply because our on-street space is limited. And most of this is actually, the policy is actually focused on reducing demand for parking and reducing demand for car use so that we can support mode shift. So what do you think about, about those, those issues around actually focusing on reducing, reducing demand for parking?
So I have no, I mean, we support bus priority strongly and removing street car parks where the buses need the priority, and this policy supports that. The key issue I'm trying to point out, though, is that your growth policy is for eighty thousand more people. And in fact, the people who drive into the CBD, a lot of them live in areas that are poorly served with public transport or any alternative modes. That's why the rent is cheap. You know, if you want to see high rent and expensive houses, you go to places with great public transport. Okay? Because further away and up on the hill, you know, it's very poor. And by not supporting increasing, in some methods, increasing commuter car parking, you are disenfranchising the most vulnerable, the poorest people, the people who are in the cafes, the people in the supermarkets. And so there needs to be a mechanism. You need to have a mechanism there, and it's not present, and that's the biggest gap in this policy.
Thank you very much, Tony, for taking the time to come in, and thank you, Darren, for supporting Tony with that. And Larry, just to make sure people are aware, Larry was on Zoom.
And Larry.
Via Zoom. So thank you very much for coming in today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Great. So Noemi, we've got Paul Bruce here, who is representing Sustainable Solutions Wellington. And Paul's submission is on page twenty-seven for councillors, if they want to see that. Thanks for coming in, Paul. So you know the drill, we've got five minutes, and I'll give you a bit of a wave when you've got one minute to go, because there may be questions.
Denakoto, Katawa councillors, congratulations on putting forward this policy, as it's been a long time coming. Wellington has marvellous features, and we have preserved a green belt for all to enjoy. However, we have followed the US model, allowing the car to rule our streets. While European cities have reprioritised people within their cities in a hierarchy that puts pedestrians at the top, followed by cyclists, public transport and service vehicles, we have left unchallenged the dominance and privilege of car drivers and their vehicles, which disenfranchise our people. Scandinavian cities are safe with lower emissions per capita, but most of all, they are pleasant places to be. Wellington built a great civet square, allowed higher density in the city living, which supports our cafe culture, and we have great beaches and a great green belt. Now we have to reclaim our streets from private vehicles with removal of vehicle parking on valuable public spaces and restrictions on vehicle entry to our city. Give over street space to people and movement. Give back street space to pedestrians, safe cycleways, public transport, quiet and high-capacity light rail. Avoid the risk of cyclists being doored by inconsiderate drivers opening their doors. Drivers look out for oncoming cars but miss the cyclist. Where there is no cycle path, cyclists should always ride in the lane to remain south. Councillors, just please remove street parking on arterial routes especially. Allow drop-off zones for disabled and elderly. Give provision for off-street facilities, for charging facilities of e-cars and e-bikes, and allow transit-oriented development around transport hubs. Above all, don't allow parking levies to be used for raising income. Let's provide the infrastructure and culture where people don't need to drive to reach their destination, where convenient public transport and active modes are the real alternative to private car travel. And Wellington becomes truly an eco-city, low-carbon, people-centred home.
Kiota, thank you very much. We have a parto from Mayor Foster.
Yeah, thanks for, always good to see you. Just, you said two things there. One, you said we prioritised private vehicles for a long time. How do you reconcile that with the fact that our mode share, certainly as measured for walking, cycling and public transport, has risen every single year for the last nearly thirty years? And car traffic hasn't risen to the same degree? And the second question is, I might have misheard you, you said, don't allow parking levies to rise to create income. Can you just, what were you actually trying to say there? I didn't quite understand that.
Okay, the first thing, Wellington is blessed with a good infrastructure that supports public transport, arterial routes, like the Hut Valley cavity. So that's especially favoured, and we were sensible enough to put in railway lines up those two routes. Unfortunately, we didn't extend it through the city to the eastern suburbs, which is partly why we don't have a good public transport elsewhere and congestion in the city, because many people that work in the southern suburbs choose to drive their cars instead of catching the train, for instance, or even within the city. Everybody at the university, Victoria University near the railway station, I think about ninety per cent of staff use public transport or come on the active modes. But if you look at the other end of the city, Massey, only about twenty or thirty per cent use public transport, because, you know, in Wellington Hospital, the majority of people from northern suburbs drive their cars, and so we actually need to provide the public transport that continues through, like light rail continuing through from railway station.
Now, what was the point you make about don't allow parking levies to rise? I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you'd do that, but if, you know, there is revenue from parking on, on streets, and, and there's a sort of possibility that you think that revenue is good, that offsets rates, and I don't think you should mind getting rid of that income stream that comes from street parking.
Gotcha.
Deputy Mayor Free.
You're the very person to ask. You mentioned the public transport quandary, of course, which we don't have a lot of ability to control. What can we do to convince the regional council that this ties together with the need for more, better public transport? And I am asking you, because I know you're supposed to be on the regional council. Well, yeah.
Yeah, well, it is really important that you keep, you know, insisting to the regional council that, well, it's the three, it's NZTA, regional council and city council working on, on, on the change for Wellington City, isn't it? And do you just have to strongly represent for, for light rail? And we see other cities that have adopted that high-capacity light rail. It provides the reliability, the capacity in, in low-emission transport that's absolutely essential for, for a city that's livable and friendly and doesn't need to have cars. Yeah, I just realised they had their climate committee meeting, and I wish I'd gone along there, because it didn't actually mean, the agenda didn't, their policy didn't mention light rail, and I wish I'd gone along there and brought that up again. And I wish I'd gone along there and brought that up again.
Oh, Ngamahe, Paul, thank you for coming in and to talk to us today. We really appreciate you taking the time. Thank you.
Yeah, ki'ora.
Kia ora. So Kia ora, Tania Ali, Noamai, welcome to submissions. Yes, it's your turn. I can see you've been, you've been waiting there for a while. And I just want to acknowledge too, we've got Rosie Henley here who is doing the translation. So thank you very much and thank you, Tania, for taking the time to come and talk to us today. So you've got five minutes, sorry, 10, I think. Oh, 10, so we've got 10 minutes. It's great to allow for the interpreter 10 minutes. And so we may have some questions, so please allow some time if you want to answer some questions. Thank you.
Kia ora. Nice to be part of your council meeting today and thank you for inviting me. My name is Tania. I live in Pāraparamu on the Kapiti Coast. So I am based outside of Wellington. I'm assuming that you received my presentation, the slides that I sent through? Did you receive that? Oh. I emailed two days ago.
We will have a look for that now. Your submission's on page 212.
All right, so maybe if, and when you do find it, you could refer to that later. It was a presentation that I put together. And obviously it relates to the topic today, which is parking in the city. Now, if I book an interpreter at a certain time, what happens is that the interpreter often comes into town and struggles to find parking and ends up being late to the interpreting assignment. It might be that they struggle to find somewhere to park on the street or they don't know where to find private parking. So that's been an issue of the deaf community. Also with businesses and parking buildings, whether they're private or public. Often you need to seek special permission to park in certain spaces. And it's also hard to research how much it costs to park in different private parking buildings. So as a deaf person, often what happens is that we arrive at an appointment, but the interpreter maybe arrives late because of issues with parking, because of the problems they have finding a park and also questions about who pays for parking. There also might be that they have issues around paying. There might be a problem with the machine. They might not have coins. Oops. So there might be issues with coins. There might be a time limit as well. And what often happens is that there's some confusion about who covers the cost of car parking. Does it come from my, for example, work support funds, the interpreter's parking costs? Or does the interpreter pay? Does the interpreter booking service pay? I don't know what Wellington City Council's stance would be on private parking or what their involvement is within the city itself, whether they have any sway to set any of the conditions for private parking buildings. Sorry, I'm just going to take Tania back a second, so. Yep, so sorry, just to take you back. So the interpreter often then will arrive in the city and they, if they can't find a street park, they might go into a private parking building. Then there's issues around whether they can be in a visitor park or not. And I'm wondering about the capacity to book parking for, say, interpreters or people who work in specific roles where they have to be there at a certain time in order to provide other people with access. Or it could be that there's some sort of permit that an interpreter or somebody in a role like that could use on their car so that they could, for example, use a private or visitor parking space. And that serves as evidence so that parking wardens know that that person works in a specific role and that therefore they can maybe park in specific parking spaces around the city. So I'm wondering if there's scope for those kind of conditions within your considerations.
Thank you. And we do have a question now. And we've got a partai from councillor Ricky Matthews.
Kia ora, Tania. It's great to see you here. It's really, really great to hear the speakers bringing from the deaf community. And I'm interested, are you really sort of talking about that we maybe think of parking for disabled people only in terms of mobility? Where for people who are deaf and have other disabilities, there are complications about parking. And yeah, so it's broader than just physical, you know, mobility.
Absolutely, yeah. So I have some additional information here. For example, around the numbers using buses. How many people leave cars at home and get on the bus versus how many people get into their cars? I wonder if you have statistics for Wellington. Also, how many people use on-street parking? And when I say how many people, I mean how many deaf people specifically? And also whether anyone beyond those with mobility issues has permits? It might be, for example, that there were specific spaces designated for people so that they knew that they could park in those spaces. So I'm just wondering, for example, where deaf people and people with other disabilities fit in to the policies that you have. I know that obviously the International for Symbol for Disability is the wheelchair. And I'm wondering if there's been some consideration around, for example, deaf people's need for interpreters and therefore the need that interpreters might have for parking? And whether there could be a way that that's signalled, either with like a specific colour on the space so that an interpreter or a deaf person knows that they can park in certain spaces? So these are just some ideas I have around improving the system in terms of accessibility for the future.
Well, thank you.
Sorry, because the problem is with the train, is that at the moment there is a difficulty with actually parking at the station. And parking cars, for example, in Wellington City. So different stations outside of the city. But also Wellington City, it's hard to pick, to even do a pickup at Wellington Railway Station because you've got taxis there and it's difficult to know where you can drop people off. So that's obviously a bit of a problem area. I know that lots of people want to do a drop-off, but there's very limited space for them to stop their cars there. So that's another issue in that there's just not enough spaces for people to park at the railway station.
Thank you very much, Tania, for coming today and bringing voice to the community, you know, that needs better access. So thank you very much. It's nice to see you again. I think I met you up in Newlands and you taught me some sign language. So thank you very much for coming and it's nice to see you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Really nice to see you. And in the future, I would love to catch up more with all of you and work together. Thank you for inviting me to be here today. Enjoy the rest of your meeting and thank you once again.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, now, thank you. We now have Lawrence Collingborn, who is here in person. We're mixing between screen and person. It's good to see you here, Lawrence. So Lawrence, you've got five minutes and I'll give you a bit of a warning when we get to four minutes just because there may be some questions for you following your submission. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's thank you for the opportunity to talk to the parking services policy. I live in Kandara, by the way, just to pigeonhole me. I noted that the word services had dropped off the, sorry? Oh, good. I noted that the word services had dropped off the title of the document. I turned the cover. I was looking for who are the users of parking? What needs do they have? What purposes are they trying to fulfil through parking? When do they need it? How much parking do we need as a city? And how is that going to change with time? And what options? Can you give your residents to engage with about how that's going to be provided? But I couldn't find those in the document. Instead, I found a document that's full of static priorities. Page six has an inverted pyramid of transport priorities with walking at the top and air at the bottom. Well, fortunately, nobody's going to park an aeroplane anywhere outside of Queen's Wharf, so we'll be all right on that one. But that makes private cars the zero priority item, right? Now, if I want to go and see my sister, I can't walk on water. So my highest priority transport type is an aircraft, okay? We were in dinner the other night and we said, "If we go to see a friend in Sietum or in Tawa, how long would it take to get there?" So we get out our smartphones. 28 minutes by private car. An hour and 40 minutes, more than three times as long, by public transport. Except actually, that's off the timetable and the train service isn't running at the moment. It's a bus replacement. And finally, we could walk five hours, 30 minutes. I put it to you that the transport priorities and the parking priorities depend on who it is and what the purpose is and can't be put in a table like that. You've almost got seven pages of computer programme in this document that would tell you how to choose priorities for parking. I'll write the programme for you, you know, for a very small fee. Two specific complaints. I believe that demand pricing is discriminatory. Is the council really saying that if you've got more money, you get priority on parking? And if you fall into a category of people that don't have enough money, you can't park? Is that what you're telling us? And then, please don't push parking into residential streets. There's a little bit in there about that. We've got enough park and ride in our streets already where I live. Our visitors come for more than two hours. They come at any time of day. There isn't a control mechanism that can stop that. And finally, I want to say, I think that COVID means that life has changed round here. I mean, ANZ Bank is closing 30% of its office space. AMI has just pulled out across New Zealand, right? You know, we don't know yet what the impact of this is. We don't need any reduced parking right now, right? I've got an e-bike. I travel in through Thornham Key and it's fine, except for those Richard double cab utes on the diagonal parking, you know, it would be great by that. So what I would suggest is, let's do an integrated transport strategy together where we recognise you may use more than one type of transport for a journey. And we need more car parks. They don't need to be in the city centre. If we had that swish-bang transport system in the middle you all want.
We've got one minute. One minute to go.
Thank you. And if we could stop the through traffic actually being in the city streets, I think there are much bigger fish to fry and I'd like us just to park the parking policy and get on to the big fish. And I'd love to join in. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a question from councillor Conde.
Thank you, Lawrence. You know, the approach that you suggest makes a lot of sense from a supply-side approach. And if I was Wilson's Parking, I would totally take your approach. The problem is that city streets are a finite space and the amount of on-street parking that we have is limited. And if we want to get on to the kinds of transport projects that we want to do around Let's Get Wellington Moving, they're going to take space in our streets. So I guess that's, I'm interested in how you feel about that, what is essentially a demand approach that we've taken in this parking policy. And that's really the issue, one of the issues around the demand pricing, is the intention is not to discriminate based on wealth. The intention is to use pricing to reduce demand so that we're able to manage a very limited resource.
About three answers to that. First of all, I don't believe you have the big picture. No transport policy in place. Secondly, if you want to kill Wellington City Centre, then please don't. And thirdly, it's not a demand size view. It is a service-supply view. It is, this council is here to serve its residents and its businesses and to attract tourists and visitors to make our city a vibrant place.
Thank you, Lawrence, for coming in today and doing your submission. We appreciate you taking the time to do so. We are now going to welcome Ben Carter on Zoom. Ben is here representing City Hop. And we'll just wait for Ben to be ready. Noamai Ben, welcome to our submissions hearings today. So you'll be aware, you've got five minutes. And if you want to allow like a minute at the end just for some questions, I'll let you know when we're getting to the four-minute point. Thank you.
Kia ora, tēnokata. On behalf of City Hop, New Zealand's first and largest car-share operator, I want to throw my support behind the proposed parking policy. We particularly like its focus on public and active transport as well as car share and its general parking hierarchy. Next slide, please. We are all in a carbon crisis fuelled by over-consumption. Unfortunately, one area of over-consumption that New Zealand excels at is car ownership. New Zealand has some of the highest ownership in the world. In fact, we're only behind San Marino and Monaco in terms of vehicles per 1,000 people. So it's not a statistic that we want to be that high on. With so many cars in New Zealand, it's no wonder we have high transport emissions, high congestion, high road trauma and such resilience to park an active transport infrastructure. The parking policy of deprioritising the private car while prioritising public transport and active transport and car share promotes safer streets, lower emissions, higher efficiency and more level cities. Next slide, please. You can skip the, two more slides. One more, please. So Tim Paton-Dreher, who's a mobility expert and chief innovation officer for San Francisco Transport Agency, says that station-based car share, like City Hop, is the only proven law to reduce car ownership and increase mode shift to public and active transport. To those who don't know what City Hop is or what car share services is, it's essentially a car you can use when you need. You simply book it online, unlock it without a car key and drive away. Having a car that you can use when you need will help many live car-free, but it may mean that people can live with one car instead of two or two instead of three. You can go to the next slide of those. One of the main benefits of station-based car share is after people join, they realise they don't need a car. And there's a wealth of international and local research. So go to the next slide, please. This is data from Auckland's surveys into our membership in both 2014 and 2018. Between 49% and 59% of our members either didn't buy a car, reduced an apartment they owned or lived without a car. So in both years, our members were surveyed, roughly 20% lived without a car. Next slide, please. This is just another statistic saying that after joining car share services in City Hop in Auckland, our members used active transport 30% more and public transport 36% more. Next slide, please. So when you're using public and active transport more, owning less cars, people drive less. So I drive 2,000 kilometres less every year, which is less congestion and less traffic. And most importantly, it's just under 400 kilograms of carbon dioxide equivalent and safety. I've got an article that I wrote more about if you want to check the sources and the data behind that. Next slide, please. So as you may gather, we absolutely support the parking policy. It's in the right direction. It focuses on the now and the future rather than the past and it promotes livable and accessible spaces. We want vibrant. We want vibrant cities for people and not for cars.
Well, kia ora, Ben, thank you for that. That was a very clear submission. I do have a question. One of the things I've noticed is we do have occasionally I'll see a City Hop car out in the suburbs of Wellington, but they're generally in the city. But I do wonder if there's the ability to focus a little bit more on suburbs because I know personally of families who have bought a second car simply because in the weekend they can't get their children to all the different sports that they need to do. And so I just wonder if there's what you're seeing about suburban use of car share, whether there is an increase?
Absolutely. So I just had a phone call before with Tom Pettit from Wellington City Council about doing the same thing, we want to move into the regions. And I think it actually answers councillor Shaun Rush's question to Eric about the car share service that he used in London as well. Our service, you can book a vehicle in advance to make sure you can get that vehicle when you need. But this is why we need council support, because if you can't get that vehicle you need, we need a network so you can get a vehicle close to you and provide affordable access. We actually want to move into the suburbs and get council support and local support to do so.
Thank you, that's really helpful to know the network is the crucial part. Councillor Pettit, you've got a question.
Great submission, thank you so much. Can you just send it through? Because I just saw some great stats that I'd like to use later. Thank you.
That was an easy question to answer, wasn't it? Councillor Rush does have a question.
Thanks very much, and I'll have a copy of that too, thank you. Yeah, I guess just going further to what I pointed out before. So if I, my day yesterday revolved around a number of different trips, doing different things, some of them unexpected. If I, for example, had to go pick up my son because he's ill from school and went to book online with your organisation, how long would it be before a car might be available?
Availability and advance, so you could book a car a week in advance, half in advance or a minute in advance depending on your needs.
So if I wanted to go to Kabuni in 15 minutes, I could book one and find it outside or nearby?
Yep, and we'll show you the most suitable vehicle to you and the most suitable vehicle type for your needs. You know, we have kind of bike racks and car seats and even dog hammocks. If you have a dog and you're in a car, we try to provide the vehicle type for every need.
That's cool. How many cars do you have in Wellington city area?
So we're just under 30 at the moment. We're sort of limited by space, we have 150 in Auckland.
Great. Thank you so much, Ben, for your taking time today to come and talk to us. We really appreciate that and it's good for us to understand the whole plethora of options. So thank you. Cool, thank you. And now I'm going to welcome Jane, councillor Young. That's quite loud. I'm going to welcome Jane Loughlin, who is on Zoom. Welcome, Jane, thank you for coming today on Zoom to talk to us. You'll have five minutes and I'll give you a warning when you get to about four minutes just so that you know that you're coming near the end. And if you do want to stop a little bit early for questions, you'd be welcome to do that.
Thank you, kia ora. I live in Wright Street, Mount Cook, so I'm going to give you a bit of background for my residence parking perspective. For the last year, my street, Wright Street's either been closed traffic or it's been the main road and it's not been the most desirable situation. It has meant that the parking issues in our area have been pretty diabolical. And as part of the TNP's for the project that's involved, parking was supposed to be made to residence parking. And unfortunately, the temporary signage that the council put up or the project someone put up isn't legal, so it hasn't been able to be enforced. So for the last year, we've just sort of had ongoing parking issues. So that's just sort of a little bit of background from where I come from. What I want to see in the new parking policy is it's all about equity and enforcement. So as residents, we often have regular patrols and if we have issues with parking, we have to phone them up and, you know, the wardens come round and do what they can or not, as the case may be. And that's sort of quite unfair and puts the onus back on us when we sort of pay for the permits. And the other issue I have is around equity and whether all areas with residence parking should actually pay for it. People in my area don't pay, other areas pay. Just, just to see how serious it is for everybody if it was just you to pay. You know, if you lived in that particular area, you had to pay for it. So really, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, that was very clear. Thank you, Jane. We do have a part, a question from the mayor.
Hi Jane, thank you. So I'm just interested in the issue of charging for parking on street. I'm just trying to relate that to demand. And I know, look, ignoring Miramar, because you mentioned Miramar, but ignoring the 24-hour parking area around there. By and large, if there's plenty of space in an area and not much demand, wouldn't the price be a lot lower than it is? I mean, this is about demand management, isn't it? Wouldn't it be much lower than the areas where there's high demand? What are you arguing for?
If you've got a residence parking area, then all people in that area need to pay for it, don't they?
Yes. Oh, so you're right, that's why you mention Miramar. So that's why you mention Miramar specifically?
Yes.
Yeah, I got you, okay, cool, okay. Okay, and secondly, with respect to, you said essentially get rid of or remove most of the coupon parking. I'm sorry, I'm going to be financial on this one, but coupon parking spaces are worth about 20 times what a resident parking space is to the council in terms of revenue. If we did that, we'd have to fix, recover that cost from somewhere else, which generally means rates. Any comment on that?
I have noticed in my area, and I could be wrong, but there's a lot of people, Jane, because there's not a lot of patrols. They're not getting it. And also, I live obviously very near Prince of Wales Park and people park in the reserve up there all day.
That parking manager's listening.
Yes. And I have had chats with Joel, but you know, I think that that is going to be included as part of some review somewhere and that it is an issue of people parking reserves. But you know, it is Prince of Wales Park still within that residence parking area. So I think more enforcement or regular patrols might get you more equity, more income and be more equitable for the rest of us.
Thanks, Jane, appreciate that.
Councillor Rush.
Thank you.
I'll make this a question, but actually, Jane, it's where my portfolio lead for water. Just want to say a big thanks on behalf of City and so on for all the work done and the problems that you've had to endure with Waller Street and so forth. And I hope it's getting better now that the pipes are in. And I know there's more work to be done, but really appreciate that. And I guess my question therefore is, is there anything else that we can be doing for you?
Well, I believe that Waller Street is supposed to be open next week, but they've realised on time for the rest of the resurfacing and that we're going to be closing it at some stage to fix the bottom of Harrods Street. It just seems to be never-ending. But what I hope is that the next stage up at the top of Rollaston Street, we're going to propose is to change a lot of the parking that you actually do right and that you mark the roads like you should do so you can enforce the parking. Because for the last year, it's been terrible for us. So you know, we don't want it to go on really.
Thanks, Jane, I've noted that.
Cool, thank you very much for coming to have a coridore with us today. We really appreciate you sharing your perspective. Thank you, have a good afternoon. Right, No My, No My Melanie Votia, who is also on Zoom. Melanie, can we see Melanie coming up? Kia ora, Melanie, oh, you're outside, that looks nice. Welcome, thank you for coming to coridore with us today. I think you're still on mute at the moment, there we go. Oh, no, you're back on mute, now you're off. It's all good, I think it's worked now. And so you've got five minutes and I'll let you know when we're getting a little bit close to the end so that you've got some time to wrap up. But if you want to allow time for questions, you're welcome to do that too. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay? Yeah, cool, awesome. Yeah, so thank you again for having me back up to say more of similar kind of things the last time. So during the lockdown period, obviously there was no car, there was very few cars on the road and it was quite stuck seeing how all that space is used and all that space is given to roads and to car parks. And I started having a few conversations with a few people about how that space might not be better used. Because I've lived in Wellington for two years and on and off before that as well. And I love Wellington, I think it's an awesome city, but I can also see how much more awesome it could be. And I think that really frustrate me about it. Mainly that coming out of lockdown and stepping out of my house and feeling like the cars have all the dominant space and I have to kind of work around the cars and move where I can. And so we had all these conversations in lockdown about how space could be better used. And we thought, when lockdown's over, let's have a next kind of coridore about it in a car park. And that's where I'm coming to you from today with a few of us here. We're right outside your office. Hello?
I saw that, that's really cool. Kia ora! Are you in a car park?
Yeah, we're in two car parks here. We've set up some chairs and some tables, I've got some muffins, got my coffee from Frank's right there, it's very good.
We want to come and join you.
Do, yeah, do, because it's actually like, come on down, do the submissions from here. Yeah, like before, I'll get them all in the background here, before we sit on our knees, I thought you'll make a good statement, but it's not going to be pleasant. Like I thought it would be kind of smelly and noisy and kind of not that nice place to be. But it's actually been really cool. We've done four of these now and the other ones have all been cut and straight. And it's incredible, when you're sitting in here, you see how much space there is in one car park. It's really spacious.
How many people have you got there?
There's 12 of us here today.
We've got people, we've got people looking out the window from this room at you guys, so give them a wave.
So our main point in doing this is just trying to demonstrate how much space there is that allocated to just kind of big chunks of steel that could be used in ways that would be a lot nicer. That could be ways, could be used in so much more awesome ways. Like for instance, using, having more space for businesses. There's been, and the other times when we've done this, there's been businesses asking us to go to outside their places so that they can kind of extend their space. It's been like places that have been full and they've been turning people away and we've gone in the car park to extend their space. Or it could be, it doesn't have to be used for that, like it could be used for cycle lanes or it could be used to extend pedestrian areas. I think it's just, it could be so, these streets could be so much nicer if the space was used differently. And that's kind of the main point of what I want to say. I have no idea what you're talking about there.
You've got a minute thirty left, but are there any questions from councillors? I can see a few people I recognise in there. Oh, councillor Young wants to know if you put money in the meter?
We did, we did. I've got a receipt in my pocket.
Oh, good work! Good value, that's good value for money, lots of people benefited from that, didn't they? Councillor?
Exactly, instead of one car, yeah.
Yeah, councillor Sperry does have a question.
That was my exact question, but I didn't call out.
Oh, well done, councillor Sperry followed the rules, so that was good, thank you. Councillor Rush, did you have a question?
I was, I did, sorry, so well done. I mean, I have to say though, it would be far more comfortable inside a cafe, I would have thought to be honest. And Wellington, well, it's not sunny. And Wellington is well-served by cafes and that is the place where we provide for people to drink coffee and integrate, so. Do you not agree?
He's getting disagreement from his colleagues here.
But the first, so one thing is often cafes are full, like the one I just mentioned, sometimes they're full and so we're extending their space available. Another thing is sometimes it's a really beautiful day. The last time we did it, it wasn't long ago, it was still just about winter, but it was hot and we were so much happier to be outside in the sun than inside on a cafe. What was the third thing? It's actually, it's also more comfortable and warm out here than inside my house. And the other point is that having it, having the space, the way that we've done it anyway, I don't know how we look in policy, but the way that we've done it, it works perfectly because the people who want to support the businesses can go and get coffees and food and bring it out. And the people who are maybe on a bit more of a budget can just bring their own over and it's a bit of a third space that you run and you don't have to spend money to be here. So that's really a lot of grass.
Well, ngamahi kiakua, Melanie, for your novel way of having your coridore with us. And thank you to all your supporters too, please pass on our thanks. Kia pa tu ahi, have a good afternoon to you all. Kia ora. Right, No My, key Brad Olson, welcome. Brad, who we've talked to many times, we've had many coridores with Brad from Youth Council. So Brad, we've got five minutes today. That's a bit of a race to get through it, but yeah, go through it.
Kia ora, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm definitely not going to try and top that because I've got nothing on it. Look, thank you very much for having me here, I will keep the remarks brief. The submission is equally brief. Yes, just noting that from young people's point of view, we endorse both, I guess, the position that council is taking moving forward with the parking policy. There's, I guess, there's always that demand of there's more that could be done with the space and there is space to be done with. And so we note those constraints and I guess, you know, the very visual example we just had of trying to maximise what we've got. Youth Council supporting the position that I don't think we need to extend the position or the amount of space utilized, it's about the allocation of that. I guess I also noted for young people that we are very much focused on the environmental impacts that, you know, the parking and by extension or more correctly by how vehicles are being utilized. And so parking, of course, being a signal for that. And I particularly note councillor Conde's focus around the pricing elements and how that might dictate demand shift. I guess I do want to comment though, from young people's point of view, it is not solely that, you know, we want to get rid of all vehicles and that they have no space anymore. It's that they have a different usage. At the moment, particularly for younger people, and I say that both in terms of young people my age, alongside those who might be children and who are living with parents and similar, that sometimes the access options that we might want to shift them towards are not particularly easy to access. So it's all good and well that we shift parking policy to something different. If the option doesn't exist for them to use active transport or similar modes, then of course it's very, very difficult to actually make that shift. So alongside, I guess, the parking policy, Youth Council's quite keen to see council's commitment and forward focus on some of the other options that can, or other policy levers that can change to allow for that. The final point, a little bit technical, but I think it is worthwhile noting, particularly given we have quite a renters' market here in Wellington or a strong rental aspect. Some of the reporting in the proposal and the documentation was focused on on-street versus off-street parking. I guess it's important to highlight that for some of that off-street parking, because the premise does seem to be a little bit that if you have a lot of off-street parking in your area, you might not need as much on-street, which theoretically makes a lot of sense. I would just note that for a lot of people who are renting, that off-street parking is not necessarily always available to that dwelling. So you may well have a parking space that a dwelling is connected to. On council's numbers, that will look like there'll be a lot of off-street parking available in area ABC. It may well be that the residents who are likely to access that cannot and may be having to use on-street. So I guess just noting that there may need to be at least a bit of an observation or a bit more work to understand what the balance is there between the theoretical availability of on-street slash off-street parking and what the actual application of that is likely to be. Happy to take your questions, councillors.
Kia ora, I've got a question from Mayor Foster.
Great to see you as always. Just picking up that issue of renters. One of the things that we quite often get is, you know, it was a family home with, you know, they maybe have one or two cars, got rented out, you know, there's five bedrooms in it. We've now got five cars. Any particular, and this is usually the suburbs rather than anywhere else, any particular thoughts on how that can be managed? Because obviously the thing that that does is it spills into streets, people start getting grumpy.
Yes, I mean, a couple and of course often in that regard as well. I think one of the exciting options there in seeing the City Hop team before is that sort of modal shift is quite interesting, particularly for young people. I say that as a renter in Mount Cook at the moment, my flatmate and I, I'm on my restricted, so I can't actually access them. But my flatmate, who does have her full, we have used some of those higher cars a number of times because it's not worth it even financially from our point of view to actually have a vehicle ourselves. So we would be reluctant to get one. At the same time, if it ever got to the point where we did have to start commuting and moving about, a vehicle would be something we would look at, just because it does provide the option. So noting that and noting when you do have an expansion of people renting, there are other modes that could well facilitate the need or stop the need rather for vehicles. It would be making sure that they are actually available in the suburbs. So something like those different modal shifts are interesting. You're right though, that a lot of renters will utilise some of, or I guess have an expanding car pool.
So do you have any thoughts about how we might incentivise people to? Because I mean, particularly in the inner suburbs, we tend to have lower car ownership. But that's also the places where you have the highest pressure on parking. also the places where you have the highest pressure on parking spaces. Any sort of thoughts on how we might incentivise people to make the kind of choices you're suggesting, which is if you don't have, you know, you don't have more cars or maybe have fewer cars and maybe car share or whatever if you need to?
I guess, I mean, look, making them available at the moment, if I want to find a city hopper or a mevo or whatever, I have no idea where the nearest one would be to my house and I suspect it's probably not very close. Um, so providing, you know, a specific spot or two.
Online, they're all online.
Yeah, but in terms of where the allocated spots are for some of these ride shares, and I say that in the sense that if I go down to the waterfront, I can find them around, uh, what is that corner, where the sort of Shafers corner near the New World, there's a bunch of spots there that are specifically for those ride shares. Um, I guess it'd be interesting to see if there could be one or two parks that were put out, so there is a bit more of a designated zone that they might be able to be accessed from.
Kia ora, thank you so much Brad for coming in today to have a kooriro with us, we really appreciate that. Kia pātou ahi'a, have a good afternoon. Um, right, I'd now like to welcome Angela Rothwell, who's here from Mount Victoria Residence Association, and Angela is coming to us via Zoom.
Hello.
Kia ora Angela.
Hi. I had a bit of trouble with my video, so I'm just going to leave that off for now.
Kāpae, that's all good. So you've got five minutes and I'll give you a bit of a warning when we get near the end of that time. Might be some questions too.
Yep, so by and large, we, I think we communicated that we support the objectives and the guiding principles of the policy. We've made a few suggestions for where we think the wording could be strengthened a little to show more support for pedestrians and active modes of transport. Um, I think really all I want to do is just reinforce what I heard and just as Jane from Mount Cook was starting to speak and, um, just like to echo what she says about wanting to see a bit more enforcement of the rules as they stand now in order to make a bit of space for parking. And, and add to what Melanie said was really resonated with me because we had a lot of conversations about exactly that, the different use of the road space over lockdown was quite inspiring. We really don't want to see it go back to how it was before. And we make this point in our submission that the, we want to see a better use of the existing space. And previously you mentioned in some submissions that we'd like to see some parking spaces within that converted and light parks and e-scooter parks and just have a bit of, yeah, better use of the space that's available to us and better enforcement of the rules. Um, we'd really prefer not to have our space used for out of suburb commuters who are renewing their cars in our suburbs a ten hours a day. We think, you know, if there was more encouragement of them to use urban transport or other active modes of transport, that would be great. And if the parking policy can support that, we'd be very grateful. And really, that's the day for today.
Oh, Kia ora Angela, really appreciate you sharing your fakarau, your thoughts with us and your experiences. Um, we don't have any questions for you at this stage, but thank you for, for coming to share your, your experiences with us, we appreciate that.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Bye, thank you. Um, we are now up to, we've got Mike Mello, who is here in person. No mai, haru mai Mike, it's good to see you today. Um, so you'll have five minutes and as you know, if you want to leave some time for questions within that, that would be great. And our clock is working today, so if you need to refer to it again, thank you.
Um, Kia ora councillors and yeah, good to see you all in person. Um, I've had enough of staring at a screen for the last few months. Um, I'd just like to make a few points, I think the, the parking policy is, is really good. Um, there are things which could, could be better and there are things which are unresolved. And one of the unresolved things is a point the mayor made earlier about the, the financial side, you've got a structural conflict within your organisation, um, that the finance, from a finance point of view, you should be having as much parking as possible and charging as much as possible. From a policy point of view, um, you're, let's get while you're moving, fewer vehicles. So, um, that strikes me as it hasn't been addressed sufficiently. The document's full of good operational stuff, but the finances are a bit, um, a bit iffy. And if you don't address that, that's going to come, continue to bite you in the bum. Um, second, the second point I'd like to make is the eighty-five percent occupancy target, which I think is really good. Um, you've actually been thinking it's really good since two thousand and seven because it's in the old parking policy and it would be really, really good to, to implement it. And, um, one of the things that, uh, we took, in one of your documents talks about the parking in the suburban town centres and all of them exceed the eighty-five percent. Um, yeah, I didn't see any proposal for doing something about that. Now, everybody likes free parking, but which is better, a free space that's not available or an available space that you have to pay for? Um, so there'll be blocks of people driving around the suburban centres, um, which you've identified in the policy as being something that's undesirable, um, but something needs to be done there. And same applies to Oriental Bay where the, who did the surveys, did the survey in winter. Um, well, what happens in summer? Uh, summer is very different and it gets very congested with people driving through there trying to find a space. Um, that needs some addressing. Um, the other thing that, uh, a stronger focus on the occupancy rate would do would be to, um, remove debates on Sunday parking, weekend parking, whatever parking from the political arena and put them in the practical arena. Um, it becomes, um, less of a, uh, an opportunity for, um, election promises that, um, may not happen. Um, and, uh, lastly, uh, one point is that there are many myths about parking and how good it is for retail. Um, I'd refer you to a, the, um, uh, shared space of Lower Cuba Street, which you did in two thousand and, well, quite a long time ago, but was subject of quite a good analysis from your council staff in two thousand and fifteen, that identified that, uh, the parking spaces there generated one customer per space per day. And that when you, when you reduce the parking there, um, the retail turnover in Lower Cuba Street increased faster than anywhere else in the city centre. So more parking is not necessarily better, better parking is better. Thank you.
Kia ora, thank you very much for that. And we've got a question from councillor Paul and then a question from the mayor. And that will be enough.
Cool, thank you. Hey, I was just wondering, do you think that you can achieve the same results of a congestion charge through parking fees?
I think a congestion charge is something that really should be looked at. Um, and a, a parking fee is a sort of a, a rather poor substitute for a congestion charge. Uh, if you want to stop vehicles moving, congestion charge is, is the way to do it. But in the absence of that, you've got to have a good parking policy, you have to have a good parking policy anyway.
Kia ora, I'm Mayor Foster.
I was just thinking, Mike, your comment about, um, parking fees and the eighty-five percent, is eighty-five percent a particularly magic number because fifteen percent vacancy is quite a bit? Uh, and on the, on the other side of that is, at what point do you, in your view, start charging? What occupancy level would you start charging? Is it at eighty-five or is it at something a long way below that?
The, I recommend reading The High Cost of Free Parking by Donald Shoup, which there's a copy in the library and presumably it will be accessible fairly soon when, when it all gets moved to Johnsonville. Um, eighty-five percent is, is, it's not a magic figure. Um, it's a figure that, that means that people do not spend too much time driving around because spaces are available. And obviously that's different for different times of day and how you introduce it is, um, uh, a matter of degree rather than a matter of absolutes. Um, but there are case studies in that, in, in that book about how to do it, which are well worth reading. And there are case studies in, um, a NZTA report on parking which uses, um, actually uses Cuba Street as an example, um, report five seven five, I can send you the, the link to it if you'd like.
That'd be great, yeah.
Um, and I can send you a link to the Cuba Street report as well, uh, which are how to apply, apply the policy on the ground, so to speak.
I'd like to talk a bit more.
I will send you through.
Ngamahi Mike, thank you very much for coming in and to kooriro with us today, really appreciate you taking the time. Well, our next two people are on Zoom, so we're back to the screen. And so Kia ora Isabella Corthon, thank you so much for, um, coming to kooriro with us today. So you've got five minutes and, um, I'll kind of give you a bit of an indication as we're getting close to the end of time, but hopefully you might have some time to answer some questions because I know there will be some questions for you. Kia ora.
Kia ora kātou, I'm walking through, okay? Yep, correct. Firstly, this is a, this is a good policy and it's a really pleasant experience to be able to address councillors and say, congratulations, this is a really good step forward. Um, I will echo Mike's recollection that we've had a bunch of good policy steps in place for some years and I'm really excited that this one might be the beginning of a more purposeful journey. Um, look, if you go anywhere around the world, talk to anybody who tries to make cities better, the one thing they will all come back and say is you can't do anything really good with your city until you've got your parking roughly right. And what's good about this policy is that it starts us on the journey. So it's been really great to see things like the street space hierarchy actually being implemented. It's really good to see that implementation being applied across the board from the inner city and the centres right out into the, into the low-density suburban zones. It's really good to see a long-term and a comprehensive approach that takes in the district plan and bylaws and all the, the network of, of, um, regulation and policy. So all of those things. It needs a bit of strengthening, it needs a bit of crisping up and, uh, yeah, I, total to the points made by, um, previous leaders about making sure that the incentives within councillor rights, so that the finance incentive isn't undercutting the overall transport management and policy incentives. And yeah, making sure that parking, like every other aspect of the city, is moving us towards the Wellington that we want to be and not undermining us or hindering our progress. So yeah, I really hope that you will find it to, find it in yourselves to support this policy and, um, move into that implementation, which will take a long time, but into that implementation journey with some real fortitude. And as we move into that implementation, there are two things that I would, um, like you to hold in your minds. One of them is about the public and our hearts and minds and the other one is about our, our brains, I suppose. First one, on the hearts and minds and about the political discussions, it's really important to get the framing right when you're talking about parking and transport. If activities that we want people to do a bit less of are framed as rights or entitlements and things that we want people to do more of are framed as choices or luxuries or nice-to-haves, then we, the public can't help but think of them in that wrong way. And we will react accordingly. So for example, when perfectly good policy is enforced, it, it, we react to it as if a right is being infringed. So that framing is really important and there's some awesome research that the Transport Agency is doing with the workshop around talking about urban mobility and I would really recommend that you have a bit of a dive into that, it will make your conversations with the public a lot easier. The second thing, this, the brains aspect of implementation, I really encourage you to be really strongly evidence-based and that's been a great thing about this policy so far. If someone says with great passion, we absolutely can't do X because equity, how do we know? What is the evidence for that? What is the impact that that effect is going to happen in the way that you say? What is the evidence that it's going to be as big an effect as you say? If somebody else absolutely must do Y because we're retail, what is the evidence for that? How big is that effect? How sure are you? How do we know? Coming back again and again to the evidence base, we should have that evidence locally, but we should also understand that Wellington, like any other city, is full of people trying to do stuff. It's got streets, it's got things between the streets, there will be an awful lot that we can actually extrapolate from other cities. So bring us back to that evidence every time. So parking, like everything else in the city, should be moving us towards Wellington priority, towards the city we want to be. And I applaud you all for this great policy and for the robust implementation. That's all.
Kia ora Isabella, you've been so clear that we have no partai for you. Thank you so much for taking the time to come and kooriro with us today and, and share those insights with us, we really appreciate that. Uh, councillors, just, it's really hard when everyone else is talking to be heard. Um, so Kia ora, thank you very much for coming in Isabelle and Isabella and have a good afternoon. Kia ora. Um, no mai Melissa Clark Reynolds, um, welcome to our hearings, um, committee this afternoon. We're, I'm looking forward to hearing your submission, so you've got five minutes and, um, I'll, yeah, let you know when we get near the end, but there, there may be some questions, but yeah, thank you.
Hi, oh, mihi o te, aha hiki a kato. Um, just a little bit of background, I have our masters in city and regional planning and, um, I'm a Rosney resident and I work as a futurist. And, um, and a lot of what I do in terms of working as a futurist is thinking about the future of transportation. Um, so I'm hired by, um, several international insurance companies, for example, on where car and so on. So, so I kind of come to you today with two hats on, one is, is a resident and the other one is, is a planner and futurist. So I guess the first thing is, um, you know, really total cool what Isabella and others have said about, it was great to have this out there. Um, one of the things that, um, we should be thinking about and that to me is really missing from what we have in front of us is the future of the car. And particularly, um, I was really surprised right through the documents that there's no real reference to, um, what is, is happening locally, which is the separation of ownership and use of cars. And one of the ways that that comes up in particular is things like Uber. Um, so you will have seen the growth of Uber, the city of San Francisco has seen that the biggest impact of Uber has been a reduction in the use of public transport, um, which is a interesting thing, a thing that we obviously don't want to see and I'm not here to talk about Uber. What I'm kind of more surprised is that, um, with the rise in Uber use, it wasn't referenced in any way in here and yet we think about the hierarchy of what taxi stands should have. And I can tell you now that I've put my money down on there not being taxi stands within the next probably three years. And so thinking about where, um, taxis and should sit in the hierarchy seems just a bit of a waste of time. Yeah. Oh, that's a question. Um, so that's one of the concerns I have. I think the other one is that you won't be at all surprised to hear that there's this thing called autonomous vehicles and it's come at quite a great rate and, um, and with autonomous vehicles, what we're seeing happen is a, a couple of. And subscription businesses growing globally, where people no longer own cars, but they have a membership to use a car. Now, ten years ago, I was a Zipcar member in London, um, so it's not like this is old, these, these models have been around a long time, but the combination of autonomous vehicles plus subscription models means that certainly in my industry, we're suggesting that within the next five years, car ownership in the international world will plummet. New Zealand is very slow and because we do receive a number of second-hand vehicles, we're probably going later to this party. But one of the questions I would encourage you to think about as councillors is how we might accelerate a more sustainable future. And, um, so I would like this plan to address leisure vehicles, car sharing, cars as access. And I think we've really missed the point on those and particularly when it was focused on taxis, which I believe are the past. Um, the next area that I think we need to have a good hard look at is around our infill housing policies. So you probably know that if you want to do infill housing, in my area, we have to provide, um, car parking side by side. And so there's a prioritisation of car parking over housing. In effect, in a meeting I was at this week at the council, I was, um, explained that by making people build more car parks, we will encourage pedestrianisation, which was a kind of ironic thing because my husband doesn't drive, doesn't own a car, we don't want a car. Um, and so we're being told that to do an infill development in Wellington, we will be required to build car parking we don't intend to use in order for it to be permitted. And international traffic studies consistently show that if you build more roads, you get more cars. And if we build more car parking, we're also going to encourage, um, more cars. And so interestingly, if we actually require infill housing to get more parking, we will probably discourage cars far more than requiring them to build these car parks. And, and I can provide all kinds of internationalies on there. There's no evidence that the provision of more car parks will reduce car use, but that seems to be the logic that we're currently running. Um, and if we are going to continue to require that, they shouldn't be side by side. And the current rules don't allow car standards, for example, so we don't think of efficient use of space. Um, so I think there's a few things like that that we should really take into account. We're not thinking in this plan about how people are going to live in the future. We're thinking about dealing with the problems we have today and then imposing a long-term solution on today's problems rather than anticipating tomorrow's. Um, so the last sort of bit that I think we should actually be asking in here is how might we discourage car ownership? And how might we accelerate, uh, a city that moves towards the future, which is subscription cars, cars of. cars, cars of service, cars on demand? And so I think that's just my final point. I don't think we've asked here, how do we move away from car ownership? And when we think about public transport, we thought about accessibility to it, but what we haven't asked is how could we make it accessible? So I'll leave it over to you. Thank you for having me today.
Kiala, Melissa, thank you for sharing your fakara with us. We did have a couple of partai for you. Do you have another way of making contact with Melissa or do you... This is our lunchtime now, I'm just aware we've gone over time and if councillors are willing to have a couple of questions, I'm willing to go with it. But I want to put it to you because we've only got 15 minutes for lunch now.
That's an interesting point.
I think what we might do is, Melissa, we can work out how to have a courtidol with you and there are a couple of partai that may come your way at some point from councillors. Well, actually what I'll do is we'll have a couple of questions and councillors who want to go and start getting their kai can just wander down the back, but we might just ask you a couple of questions now, is that okay? Kiala, so we've got councillor Panet first.
Hi. Hi, Melissa, thank you. I can't help you out with your issue by issuing you an exemption, it's very frustrating. So I'd like to ask, as a Rosneath resident, do you need two cars to live in Rosneath and have a good life and access city services, do you think? Okay, that was nice and succinct. So that was very... Kiala, that was a very quick question. No, you're not...
Just hang on, hang on.
So what do you think? So you think it would be possible for people living in your neck of the woods to be able to use, you know, City Hop or Mivo or whatever to meet their needs so that we don't have an average of two cars in Rosneath, which has stopped you not building a car pad or a garage?
Yeah, I think it's even further, we need to think further ahead. So in the US, Mercedes has a service for $1,384 a month, you can get any Mercedes you want. So I could have an SLK one weekend, I could have a camper van the next. It's a requirement for me to store that vehicle on my side. So Mercedes owns the car, I use it when I need it. Within a couple of years, it's going to come to me. That doesn't mean I need a car park dedicated to it. I'm probably needed to be having, you know, the right vehicle arrive at the right time for what I need. So I keep these in Rosneath, so I might want a station wagon some weeks and at other times I just don't need a car at all.
So true.
So I don't, why should I have to buy a station wagon full time because I keep these? You know, it doesn't make sense. And that's where car ownership is going.
Such a good point.
I don't need to store it if it's not my owner.
Kiala, we do have a partai from the deputy mayor, Ciarí.
It's fascinating to actually meet you, I will see you, because I've seen some of your tweets. My question is about micro mobility. As a futurist, how do you see that fitting in to the transport system?
Well, I guess like I, and I travel excessively and, you know, I love LA, I spend quite a bit of time there. I love there that all of the, say, electric scooters, you know, they're required to be on the road. And I've really thought about pedestrians and how that should work. But what they also do is they've got an active policy of trying to remove cars. And so I think, you know, even I as a futurist didn't predict the rise of these, you know, small, like scooters, you know? And I think we've got a real issue where we need to be planning for those. It makes total sense. And I know in my dissertation I wrote that I used to cycle and I just got too frightened, particularly with the buses cycling through the central city and I no longer cycle. But if the footpaths are for pedestrians and we prioritise, you know, small school commuter kind of vehicles, whatever they might turn out to look like, whether it's e-bikes or whether it's scooters, I think they're not going away. They may make perfect sense in the future. And we're seeing a massive rise in individual ownership as well as the collective ownership of those kinds of mobility devices. And even in a hilly city like Wellington, it makes so much sense.
Kiala, thank you. And we do have one more partai from councillor Rush. Thank you so much for answering our extra questions.
Thanks, Melissa. I also live in Rosneath. In fact, I wear another hat as chair of the Rosneath Resident Association and it'd be great to get you to come along and say a few words at some point. But I'm interested in your take on where we are with AVs because getting all political, the Wellington Party felt that AVs are much closer than what we are planning for. In fact, I think Transpau talked about in the next 10 years, where do you think they are?
Well, the word that I do, trucking, I have a number of clients, trucking is the first area. Well, actually, the first area, John Deere is the world's leading investor in autonomous vehicles. And in the US now, they decided five years ago that they didn't want to sell any more tractors, they wanted to provide tractor as a service, tillage as a service, reaping as a service. And we're now seeing that that's widespread, certainly in the Midwest, that there's been a massive change in ownership. And I've done quite a bit of work for New Zealand banks and others on what that means for New Zealand ownership. So we're going to see it in farm equipment first, trucking second. So Amazon is investing heavily in the deployment of autonomous trucks. And then I think we're going to see it in domestic vehicles last. So, but I don't think it's going to take 10 years. The issue is going to be whether New Zealanders will continue to buy second-hand old technology or whether they will move to new technology. The good thing about the new technology is that it reduces accidents. So autonomous vehicles are precious often, they don't need a charging, they can park in much tighter spaces, they're also able to go somewhere and wait for you while you do whatever is needed.
Yeah.
I think it's more of a life to tear and then...
And what can we in the city council be doing with our district plan coming up to make us ready for this? As we talk about trying to be a smart city and this doesn't seem to be part of that conversation as far as I'm aware, what do we need to do?
Well, thanks to them, I used to sit on ECA's group around electric vehicles and I think we need to be already asking, like with electric vehicles, what does it mean to be putting in charging stations for autonomous vehicles? And we're not doing that. At the moment, all of the charging stations we're putting in are very huge, like the Mount. So that's one area, is thinking about how do we convert our electric charges into autonomous charges in the future? Now, we don't know when yet, but we should be providing for that. Another area I think is actually in reducing the requirement for parking because that would discourage people from buying new cars.
Kiala, Melissa, thank you so much for answering our partai. Have a good afternoon, Kiala. Kiala, thank you. So what we're doing is we're just adjourning the meeting, councillor Young, hold on, mayor Foster, hold on, we're still finishing off here. So if you can be back in like 10 minutes, because we've got to make sure we get through all of these because we have PRC coming after. So we're starting again in 10 minutes. I just want to let the people know who are sitting in our gallery that you're welcome to have some kai, there's some sandwiches there, so if you want to do that in the next 10 minutes, please do so. And yet, we're running a fairly tight ship this afternoon, so Kiala.
Foster, can you come and join us please? And Deputy Mayor Free? Sorry, not to stress you out, but we do have a list of people, I don't want to hold people up, who are taking their time out of their day to come on Korirua with us. So it's really important that we keep moving. Um, alright. So, Noamai Peter Skrzynski, thank you very much for coming in to Korirua with us this afternoon. Thank you, you'll have five minutes, and if you want to leave some time within that five minutes for questions, that would be great, and I'll let you know when we're getting close to a minute to go.
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm here to make a plug for motorcyclists, I know you've already had some submissions for that, saying various things like, they should be able to park on footpaths, and they should continue to have free parking forever, et cetera, et cetera. And my main thrust is really that motorcyclists should be considered as one of the forms of transport that can reduce congestion overall. And keeping in mind that public transport and active modes are not suitable or practical for everybody. And, um, so, uh, we know in the CBD at the moment, the motorcycle parking is heavily used, especially in the northern part of the CBD. And, um, I think there should be more motorcycle parking in the CBD. Um, excuse me. Um, also, with regard to, um, charging, it seems inevitable that motorcycle parking may be charged for in the future. So, um, some people think that shouldn't be the case, but, uh, so I'm lost for words now.
You can always do some questions, and then that might prompt you, what you want to...
Yeah, yeah, because I think like, if charging is introduced, it could always be done via the existing parking meters. Um, there's ways and means, um, to introduce that. And I think my, my main point is really to emphasise that motorcyclists should be considered as a easing congestion, and certainly not contributing or, uh, increasing it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, we've got a question from councillor Young.
You did actually say you want to have free parking on the footpaths?
Uh, no, I don't specifically agree with that.
Sorry, I thought that's all right.
No, that's another submit, I've heard that at a previous submission.
Okay, okay, I just took it out of context, because I was going to say, one of the things that I'm really keen on is keep footpaths for feet.
Yes, exactly, yes.
We don't, we don't need to know that right now. Um, councillor, well Deputy Mayor Free?
Yep.
Yes, so Peter, I'm just really interested in your views on how motorcycles contribute to our low carbon aspirations, or if they do, in your view.
Well, certainly, there are electric motorcycles out there, you do see them occasionally, and there will no doubt be more of them in the future. And I know motorcycles are sometimes dismissed as dirty and smelly, but certainly no more than the buses on Willis Street sometimes. Um, but probably for the near future, they will obviously be mostly petrol driven. So yes, there is the climate change aspect to it there.
Councillor Sparrow.
Yeah, thanks Peter, so would it be fair to suggest you can park six motorcycles in like sort of average car park? And if that's the case, would it be reasonable to, if that is the case, you can comment on that, but if that, if that is the case, would it be fair to charge one-sixth of what a car would be charged for the same space?
Uh, I think it should be free up to a certain number of, two hours perhaps, and but certainly for commuter parking, a charge of some kind is viable, and certainly not the same as would be charged for a short-stay car park. Because fundamentally, the car pa, on-street car parking in Wellington is short-stay, whereas the motorcycle parking is long-stay, so that's a different, um, user group, yeah.
Kewra, councillor Conde.
That was actually leading into my question Peter, which is that in the parking policy, we clearly prioritise short-stay visitation that supports retail and those sorts of things over commuter type parking. But most of the motorcycle parking in the city is commuter parking. So, you know, how would you feel about motorcycle parking on-street being converted primarily to short-stay parking? Um, and us having to work with maybe more of the parking buildings to find other options for commuter parking?
Well, that would affect all of those commuters, motorcyclists. Certainly, it's an area that I think commercial operators haven't gotten to, and I guess they don't want to for whatever reason. They might find it too difficult or challenging. I know you can park in parking buildings and pay the full rate, if you, yes, at $20 a day or whatever it is.
Kewra, Peter, thank you very much for your submission today, really appreciate you coming in to Korirua with us. Um, Noamai Kiri Lapiette, thank you Kiri for coming in today. Um, so you've got five minutes, and if you want to leave some time for questions within that, that'd be great. And the time is just up there.
Kewra, thank you.
Kewra.
I've just come in to say, really, to support the parking policy in general, and just to put my point of view, which is that it's really all about public transport and active transport, and that the parking policy really needs to be there to support those other modes of transport. So, um, I think that public transport needs to be reliable, regular, frequent, and have accurate real-time information. And therefore, the bus lanes and routes must have priority over the parking. And I see that's one of the big things that I've really come to make a statement about, is, bus lanes and cycle routes must have priority over parking. Um, I agree with someone I think heard earlier that there should be no expectation of a right to park on the road for people living in the city. It's sort of come up quite a bit about making this a, um, active transport city. So, including tradies, loading zones for short-term, but then they should be looking to park off-street somewhere for the, for the day. I believe that resident parking permits should be equally shared regardless of the existing property's parking area, so to better value the price of real estate. And I was a bit disappointed here just now that if you're going to do infill housing, you've got to produce a car parking space, because that would be contrary to how I would see it. Because you need to value the land that we have here so that people can actually live on it, rather than park cars on it. I think as good as parking should be part of road furniture and not taking up footpath. Um, bus stops are required at sports facilities. And I agree with the price reflecting availability, so that we're trying to keep turnover of parking for short-term shopping and that type of thing, so exponential rise in the parking price after a set time, I agree with that, in the policy. And the system used to reflect the rate of its popularity. So, I did read somewhere in the policy that if the parking wasn't used in it, price might be fairly low. And I think councils should use more permeable surfaces and gardens for the control of stormwater between, for instance, between car parking and footpath, there needs to be much more permeable surfaces. That's basically it, thank you.
Kewra, thank you for that, we do have one part, I am from Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Kiri, thank you. Um, two questions here. First one, I didn't quite get what you were saying about recent parking. You said it should be equally available regardless of something, rather than quite...
Oh, yes, I, I don't think that we should take into account whether there is a parking already on someone's section when handing out residents' parking permits.
That's basically, you've got one regardless of what your situation is. Yeah, okay, thank you. And the other one, just in terms of what you said about agreeing with the price reflecting availability, did you say availability and the time staying? Because one of the concepts, one of the concepts which is, is you know, if you're there for, because we're really trying to prioritise where it was parked in short-stay. So maybe if you park for the first, if you park for half an hour, it's this level. Park for an hour, it's prices that, if you park for two hours, it's that, three hours or whatever. Is that the kind of thing you're talking about? Yeah.
Yeah, it is exactly that, and I just think that it's quite a good thing to have that exponential increase, because you are putting a price on that, and if someone's prepared to pay that much higher, then sure they might spend an extra 20 minutes doing a bit of shopping before they rush back, they've got to make that price trade-off.
Yeah, cool.
Oh yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
Kewra, thank you Kiri for coming in to Korirua with us. Um, Noamai Alan Blake, Kewra, thank you for coming in today, Alan. Alan's representing Living Streets Aotearoa. And thank you, Alan, so you've got five minutes, and I imagine there will be a few questions, Kewra.
Kewra Tato, thank you for letting me speak on behalf of Living Streets Aotearoa. We've been interested in parking for a long time, and we put in some suggestions for the parking policy two years ago. So yay, thank you for finally getting it on the, on the table. Um, it's really important for pedestrians, which sounds weird, but I'm going, hopefully it will all become clear. Um, and I just commend staff on producing a really good document with heaps of fantastic information, that's really useful. Um, so what we were thinking is that this, this new policy is kind of a high-level strategy, and it's intended to have plans underneath. Um, so I think it needs to be even, or we think it needs to be even more strategic. So, um, if I can just explain that a little bit. It's all in the, our submission, but it's, now sorry, there's not more time to talk about it, but anyway. So, as far, as I understand it, only 14% of central city parking is covered by the policy. There's a lot of detail on how the council will manage its own 14% of parking. So that leaves, if my maths is good, 86% of parking in the central city is not covered by this policy. It really needs to be to have that high strategy view, that we've heard from people just now, who, that some of that motorbike parking, where does motorbike parking fit into it? There's a whole lot of stuff, where does the public and the private parking fit into it? Um, and Kiri was just saying about resident parking, you know, where do driveway accesses fit into this? Because that's taking up road space as well. So, it really needs to cover all, excuse me, all parking in Wellington. And so that includes all, all types of parking, private and public, all, all parts of the road. So footpaths are part of the road, and I'm going to go into that a little bit more, and all vehicles. So, vehicles include bikes and e-scooters, and I'm not seeing the e-scooter issue coming out in this policy nearly strongly enough, or other micro-mobilities. Um, so, so we need the high-level strategy, but I'm also a little bit concerned about how is this going to get implemented? Because the strategy's sort of going there, but if we have to come up with a plan for every area, how is that, how on earth is that going to happen, even from a resources point of view? And who gets to go first? For instance, Mount Victoria seems to have, uh, what do I call it? It's our capacities is pretty much used up, but maybe not getting enough complaints. Whereas from Newtown, you seem to be getting a lot of complaints, but they're still cleaning their capacity. So, who gets to have the plan first? I think, I don't want to go into that too much, but I think there's a real issue around there. And then a key bugbear for Living Streets is the enforcement policy. There isn't a lot of talk in here about how you're going to enforce things, because you're probably aware that currently in the suburbs, if you have a car parked on the footpath, somebody has to complain about it, and then the warden has to go there and measure if there's one metre of footpath left. Now, as you know, parking on the footpath is not permitted anywhere in New Zealand. But the enforcement approach is that the council says we won't give you a ticket if you've left one metre. So it puts the parking wardens in a bad position, because they have to negotiate all of that kind of stuff as well. And it's, it's not consistent, and it doesn't seem to clear message. Um, gosh, I'm running out of time. Um, so, we're just talking about motorbikes, e-scooters and bikes, they all get parked on footpaths now. The council provides on-footpath bike parking corrals. There's, there's footpaths bike parking along the Golden Mile on our most precious bit of footpath. There's footpath parking outside Clyde Quay School on the Coob build-out, which blocks people from seeing the kids. So, I would really like to see this, we'd like to see this policy address some of these bigger issues as well. And I really want to have a few questions, so we can stop. Sorry.
Oh, thank you Alan, you've done a great job there. Are there any questions for Alan? Aye, councillor phone.
Can you, um, describe to councillors the challenges of the cars actually parking on the pavement? Because you've really tried to demonstrate this quite a number of times, and now everywhere I go in the city, that's of course all I see. Um, but yeah, can you just describe the results or the outcomes for people that are trying to use the footpaths?
Okay, so we, we have, Lui and I walked down around Brooklyn, and on Hero Road, there is always, always, always cars parked on the footpath. There's only footpath on one side of Hero Road, you know it's the main route to the tip. So, big trucks going past all the time, it's also a main route for the school. So the little kids have to somehow or other get, walk along there and figure out whether they can get past the cars. Sometimes you can squeeze past, sometimes you can't squeeze past. You certainly can't push a pushchair past quite, quite frequently. Um, there's always cars there. Why, why isn't the parking wardens going there and ticketing them all the time? Um, there's things, there's things you could do to make that design better, but it's a, it's a big issue, and that's for kids. Think about people in wheelchairs. Um, you know, that they should never have to ask somebody to move their flipping car off the footpath to get past, ever, ever.
Thank you, well said.
Think about sitting in the rain in a wheelchair with, waiting, looking for a car, and...
Kewra, thank you Alan for your very clear submission to us, we really appreciate you coming in to Korirua with us today.
We'll be very happy to talk about it some more, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, Noamai William Geest, so welcome William, if you'd like to come up and join us. Um, William's submission, sorry councillor, I haven't been telling you, William's submission's on page 99. Um, we're, we're trying to run to time, it's a, it's a real challenge. Um, so you, you have five minutes, and I'll give you a sort of a bit of an indication when we're getting close to four. There may be some questions for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I'll start with a direct attack on the hierarchy of transport strategy, transport hierarchy and transport strategy, section 2.2.1 of the accessible version of the plan, because I think it's seriously out of whack. Council's fascination with walking and cycling generally borders on the irrational. It's a fairly limited breakdown, that, um, that inverted triangle. And I would rather see a lot more detail there, taking into account that commercial, most commercial activities require the use of vehicles for one way or another. And it is commercial activities that drive the economic health of the city. Um, there's only a small group of people who come into the city who can actually voluntarily for, uh, shift into public transport. There's the commuter, and there is no definition in here of what a commuter actually is. But in my mind, it is the person who's making a single trip in for a job in the city at Peacells, and then going out again at night. Um, and there are the cyclists and pedestrians who could always hop on a bus. But of course, they also are already using an environmentally friendly method of travel. Um, what I don't understand is where actually do pedestrians and cyclists fit in the commercial activities of the city? Um, I suggest that they're either doing some form of leisure, or they are commuters. You don't do much shopping on a bike or by foot. You do. Well, I come from Corori, and I don't. Um, I bought a new television just a few days ago. I didn't buy it in the Golden Mile, by the way, more on that later. But I can't take that on a bus or on a bike, so car it was. Where's my next point? Many commercial activities have fixed locations, customers must come to them. Examples are professional people, service providers, a huge range of them, retailers. Government activities are also mostly in fixed locations, both local and central government, and their clients or victims are also a form of customer. Short-term parking is essential for commercial activity. Loading zones are also essential, but I wish they weren't just called that. When an electrician or a tradesman comes to a multi-storey apartment block, has provision been made for him to park? Is that the private owner's responsibility? Or should they be able to park on the street? I don't think there is sufficient recognition of just what space people who carry out business in the city has been made in this parking policy. I acknowledge that the city itself has control only over a small proportion of the total number of parks. I guess what I'm saying is that I think that those parks should nearly all, if not all, be short-term. But they need to be split by those people who are actually carrying out or contributing to the commercial activity. But they need to be split by those people who are actually carrying out or contributing to the commercial activity and those who perhaps come into town for some other purpose.
We're just coming close to the end now, we've got thirty seconds to go.
Thirty seconds to go, that's about right. I'm also concerned about the talk of charging for electric vehicles. In my book, that's a fully private sector activity, such as topping up my car with petrol. Council should confine itself to suitable planning provisions for electric vehicle charging and encourage Wellington Electricity to cooperate. In that regard, I think council could do, put a bit of pressure on GWRC to get our diesel-powered fleet converted to electric. Actively penalising residents for not having an electric car, that is, by giving priority to electric cars to get residents' car parked, which is what I think I read, is a step too far. Cheapest new EV is the NG crossover at fifty grand. That you're looking at a limited range of used inwards.
Kewaera, William, we have come to the end of the five minutes. But thank you so much for coming and taking the time today.
I got most of it across.
Yeah, you're koorerua with us. Thank you very much.
You're going to deliver a blistering attack on the squalid Golden Mile.
Thank you very much.
That's, I'll be back.
Kewaera, so now I'd like to welcome Noamai to Pimborun and Geoff Coleman from the Bus and Coach Association of New Zealand. So if you'd like to come forward. So you've got five minutes. And as you can see, five minutes goes really quickly. There may be some questions for you, but it has to fit into the five minutes, so. Kewaera.
Policy focuses on supporting movement of vehicles around Wellington in a sustainable manner. However, we are concerned by the lack of recognition for coach parking in the policy. Coaches provide significant benefit for the city and support many principles in the policy, including increased economic growth, providing more sustainable methods of transport and reducing the number of vehicles moving around the city. And you'll recall, your worship, that I think I talked to you about this in your first week as mayor. I will briefly touch on our key concerns in relation to this policy. These are coach parking has become increasingly scarce in Wellington, the lack of safe access to venues through loading zones, the economic benefit provided by coaches to Wellington. I'm sure you're also aware that coach companies at the moment are quite stressed, but we're looking forward to tourism coming back. Coach parking in Wellington has been increasingly limited in recent years due to the increased demand as well as the removal of parking spaces to make way for public transport, roadworks and cruise passengers. The loss of private parking due to earthquakes has further strained reliance on public car parks. A lot of work has been done to increase the number of days that tours stay in Wellington, from staying overnight to often staying for a couple of days. However, the pressure on coach parking has made it extremely difficult for coach and tour operators to access the city. Coach parking is also likely to further reduce as a result of plans for Let's Get Wellington Moving. Although COVID-19, as I've just mentioned, has severely reduced the number of coach tours accessing the city right now, this parking policy should provide a long-term framework for Wellington's parking, factoring in the future growth of tours that will likely occur post-pandemic. The lack of access to venues via loading zones. Coach operators also struggle with access to major event venues and hotels in Wellington. The lack of parking space and loading zones nearby poses safety concerns for drivers and passengers. In many instances, there is no safe space close to these venues and coach operators must drop passengers much further away from the venue. This makes important venues inaccessible and deters visitors and operators from having the best possible experience in Wellington. Many drop-off areas also have tight corners that make it difficult to manoeuvre around venues, such, I'll just walk past the James Cook Grand Chancellor, where buses park on the footpath. The lack of drop-off zones near Sky Stadium also mean that the stadium is inaccessible to many school and charity groups because they must pay the hundred and ten dollar fee to enter the stadium. This extra cost often makes that stadium untenable for these groups. We urge the council to use this opportunity to ensure hotels and conference venues have suitable parking and loading zones available and that future hotel developments ensure that there is sufficient coach parking nearby to match the size of their conference facilities. The BCA would welcome the opportunity to consult on future coach parking or pickup and drop-off zones. Finally, economic benefit of coaches to Wellington. Coaches as part of the tourism industry bring significant economic benefit to the city. For every extra day that a tour stays in Wellington, it has a significant impact on the Wellington economy, as I've explained in my submission, and bringing people to Wellington, accommodation, attractions, retail and hospitality, with the average visitor in Wellington spending three hundred and sixty-two dollars a day. Continued pressure on coach parking will likely make many tour operators look elsewhere to cities which choose to accommodate coaches. While there are many competing interests in relation to Wellington's limited available parking, so I'm sure you were hearing, coach tours provide a valuable and important contribution to Wellington's economy as well as the movement of people. This necessitates coach parking being provided for in this policy. We recommend that the council immediately maximise the use of parking spaces by making loading zones and goods and service parking, coach parking overnight from six P M, available for coach parking overnight from six P M. We also recommend that areas are available nearby to hotels and venues as well as look to create a designated parking area to meet the demand for coach parking in Wellington. In conclusion, coaches are extremely important to the Wellington economy and movement of people around Wellington. However, coach operators and tours are continually restricted from accessing the city by lack of coach parking and pickup and drop-off zones near venues. This impacts on the safety and easy movement of people around the city. The lack of mention of allowance for coach parking in the policy will likely have negative impacts on Wellington's tourism. We urge the council to actively consider how coach parking can be factored into this policy. I'm happy to answer six seconds worth of questions, Madam Chair.
Kewaera, councillor Pennett, can you?
Please. Obviously, COVID means our borders may be closed for some time. So what's your sort of midterm projections for demand for services? Are you expecting local tourism mostly?
Look, we're expecting that certainly international tourism will be down for the next eighteen months. As most, you know, we represent three hundred bus companies, bus and coach companies, and our coach companies are hurting. A lot of them have gone into hibernation. That doesn't mean that we don't think there's an opportunity for domestic tourism. And obviously, the Australian bubble's going to be a saviour for our industry, for our tourism, coach industry. So either way, this is a long-term policy and we know that tourism continues to grow over time.
Kewaera, thank you very much to both of you for coming in today. I really appreciate you taking the time. So now we've got Alicia Hall from Millions of Mothers joining us via Zoom. Noamai Alicia, you'll pop up soon. Kewaera Alicia, thanks for joining, thanks for joining us today. So if you want to do your koorerua for its five minutes and if you do want to allow some time for questions within that five minutes, that would be great. I'm sure there will be some partay.
Ahi, ahi, Mariae. I apologise, I'm a little bit unprepared today. Some life things have taken precedence this week, so I'm just going to give you some broad thoughts. I hope you can hear me okay. I am, yeah, I'm just waiting for the ferry, so it's a bit noisy. Yes, right, so we are really pleased the council is diving into this tricky territory and we support measures for a more strategic parking policy. This policy impacts our choices around how we move around our city, which is quite frankly the kick-up-the-bum many of us need. Councillor Rush, I'm actually about to shock you with my confession. I love my car because it's the easiest option, which I'll talk about later. But my reliance on this easy option is actually at the expense of a truly great transport infrastructure, at the expense of clean air and no noise pollution, at the expense of health benefits for many of walking and cycling. So we're looking here at how to meet people's needs. I never got my driver's licence until I was thirty-three and managed to easily commute shop, work in cities, and to take a car, help avoid our neighbour body to cycle, was able to easily access public transport. Many of our members are elderly, have disabilities or children with disabilities, are mentally compromised, have young children, so it's not always practical to use different modes. And parents, many parents in the city work part-time and do tourism. And for safety reasons, we need accessible car parks. So we must ensure that priority is actually given to the people who need, not want, but need parking spaces and access policy. And just breaking down this energy parking, this has been a complex discussion, in our group anyway, and it requires a bit of nuance, many houses that are shared. We have a few smalls that share, so a bit of an equity lens, I think, is required here. Yes, so yeah, my love of the car. I have three, so how is this easy? Pop them in the car, come into the city, do my thing and parking. So I actually fully support removing car parks to improve infrastructure and making walking, cycling and public transport easier to get us well on the way to being the coolest little zero-carbon capital. So it's like a bit of a carrot and stick approach, like removing car parks so that we can put in there, or use a friendly infrastructure. But it'd be really cool if we could also look at ways to subsidise or encourage central government to subsidise on electric bikes, which would make it much easier to make better choices for our health, wellbeing and environment. Okay, I'm going to go there. I am a little bit frustrated with some of the submissions today. I'm a mum, so I have a really pragmatic attitude. I think we need to be working on solutions, making our public transport better, not just going, oh, it's awful, keep car parks. Because we need to transition and adapt to positive change, not clutching our pearls at a few car parks removed because that ensures that everyone has accessible and equal transport options. We're human, we resist change, it's our nature. But it's coming, whether we like it or not. The council must be proactive, engaging communities and continue leading the way. Overall, we support council plans to rent more auto parking spaces to enable a healthy and private city. We're facing a huge cultural shift in how we move, work and play, so please keep encouraging.
Kewaera Alicia, we've run out of time for questions, but I'd just like to acknowledge your sharing the realities with us and being in that great outdoors, showing us that technology makes it possible for people to participate whatever's going on in their lives. So thank you so much for joining us and kia pātou ahihi, kewaera. So now I'm going to welcome Martin, who I can see is also joining us on Zoom. Kewaera Martin, welcome. So you have five minutes and I'll try and give you an indication as we get closer to the end of the five minutes. There may be some questions that you might want to allow some time for within that five minutes. Kewaera.
Thank you. Yeah, I unfortunately don't have any birds in the background, but I did find myself popping on the chair every single time that Alicia just made it in. I hope I can even reach up to that high level she just delivered, but I'll try. So tēnā, kōtou, katoa. And thank you very much, councillors, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today on the new parking policy of Wellington City. I don't want to start without acknowledging first that what I've seen so far really instills that you're on to something good. And so let me start off by saying thank you very much to all the work that has been done by all of you. During Level Four, my kids and I were cycling down the middle of Porty Place in Tarranak. And ever since we returned to Level Two, Wellington is roaring again with engines transporting individuals. It makes me pretty sad. There'll always be good reasons for an individual to opt for a car, for slightly longer hauls to transport, especially in the absence of suitable public transport. Or, well, just when the convenience comes cheap and it's a no-brainer to hop in the car for a quick trip to the shops. And as a result, the roads are clogged, the city smells and massive amounts of prime centre-city space are reserved for the sole use of cars who spend ninety percent of their time not moving. What a waste. And part of the problem, I think, is that most people still head to town with the confidence that they'll find a park and that it won't cost more than walking in weather. And this needs to change. I personally am with Alicia on this. I don't think price is a regulator because just pushing the hourly parking fees further will highlight the divide between rich and poor. Parking should instead be strictly limited and allocated on a need basis. And this need needs to apply to privately owned parking space as well, or else we'll just let price dictate the market again. Commuters need to be given real alternatives with reliable bus or light rail services. We obviously need accessibility parking and loading zones. It would make sense to me to have nearby short-term parking as well as parking reserved for shared venues. But long-term parking in the centre of town, where the highest density of people go about their daily lives, while that seems about as out of place to me as a landfill in the middle of a recreational facility. And for that matter, the same applies to ground-level parking lots, which could be parks, high-rise parking buildings, which could be converted to apartments, or car mechanics on Torrey Street, nothing personal here. But those could be instead converted to cafes for retailers reachable by foot. Getting there requires bold leadership. And I'm thanking those of you already on board of the change train. I cannot wait to see the plans around Wellington's Golden Mile further up the globe. Now, if you look towards Europe, where my mountain range lies and my river flows, then it has to remember that the little cities we know of tourist photos weren't always what they are now. Vienna was full of cars in the seventies, whereas now it has one of the most famous pedestrian areas in the world. But hey, it started small, with just one street converted. And now it has the largest pedestrian-only area on earth. Amsterdam and Rotterdam, widely known to be bike and most bike industry in the cities today, they used to be the gold exhausts until their city councils decided to head off in a new direction. My point is not that Wellington has to catch up, but rather that it can be done and consistently taking little steps will allow us. We're still in the wake of a crisis that has transformed our imagination of what changes we are capable of even with these with the short timeframes. The mayor of Paris just recently announced that the city will be slashing every second parking space by the end of the year. This is a city that already has large pedestrian-only zones and whose COVID recovery relief included unbureaucratic permission for cafes, restaurants and retail stores to use parking spaces to help them with social distancing and declining revenues. I sincerely hope that Wellington will similarly make the right decisions now and in the future, such that maybe, maybe one day, we can rise to become the coolest liberal capital.
Kewaera, Masa, you were very clear there and thank you for sharing some other experiences around the world with us as well. We don't have any time for any partay, any questions now, but you were very clear and it was very helpful to hear from you today. So have a good afternoon, kewaera. I was going to say, Martin, we just had a comment that someone was saying, your little unicorn isn't here with you today, so. Thank you, kewaera.
Thank you very much.
Kewaera. So now I'd like to welcome Angela Stewart, Haremai Kietipu, come and join us at the table. Angela, you'll have five minutes and you can see there's a clock there just to help if you're wanting a guide with time.
Tēnā kōtou, tēnā kōtou. Over. I'm an individual, just speaking for myself and people in my neighbourhood, people I know, I've been informally interviewing people about what we feel about accessing Wellington, how we stop Wellington dying because of COVID. And even before COVID started, the Golden Mile was undershot because it's so expensive to get parking anywhere near it. Now, not all of us are young and fabulously fit. Some of us are old, some of us have two or three kids to deal with, some of us have a dodgy hip or don't see very well, who are scared about scooters on the footpath. We all deserve access to the amenities of the city. We helped build it for decades, we paid rates for decades. I don't want to have to battle e-scooters and bikes on the footpath. Many of my friends have been injured. Then there's the question of coupon parking. Coupon parking, you know, four dollars fifty now at Lower CBD, Lampton Key. Coupon parking now fifteen dollars. I've spoken to so many women who were like Alicia, kids but have part-time jobs, five hours a day, work maybe eighteen dollars an hour, fifteen dollars for that coupon, has pushed so many of them, they are just absolutely crying with it. What has happened is, in my suburb, which is Northland, Randwick Road, Northland Road, Alboma Road are starting to be completely filled with people who just dropped their cars. My street is Harbour View Road, it's a one-way road, it's narrow, it's very, very winding, it's chock-a with vehicles. And the minute that coupon went to fifteen dollars, we suddenly couldn't move. You just couldn't, you know, this is wrong. If you are going to do this, you have to understand the ripple effect goes far. All of Wellington is being affected like this. In my opinion, some of these fees are simply usurious. They really... They really and truly are. And then the cheek of actually charging extra to pay for your meter uh by using a credit card, it's not right. It's not fair. You may think, people seem to be of the view that everyone who's of gold card superannuation age is flush with cash and just having a super time. That is not true. In these days with multiple divorces, many people are left with less than GST to live on. If a woman's gone through a couple of divorces, you're over and out. It's just not fair. Now, if you have any questions, carry on.
Kia ora, um, are there any questions today, councillors? Councillor Pannett?
Thank you for bringing that perspective. Um, what do you think about balancing the costs though of car ownership? You know, like if it costs you around five grand a year to run a car and insure it and all the rest of it, and then some of the social costs of, you know, poor health and and damage to the environment? How do you sort of think we should balance those two things?
I think not everybody has a car that costs that much to maintain. Most of us get around in old bangers, step one. So the car has already been depreciated maybe eight years ago, judging by what I see. Um, so there's that. But if you need to have a medical appointment or a dental appointment, or you need, you would like to do some shopping, what is happening currently with many people that I've spoken to is they simply can't afford to drive into Wellington. They're Wellingtonians, they pay rates. And where they are taking their business is to two internationally owned boards, one in Porirua, one in Lower Hut, and taking their cafe and lunch business and being with friends to, you know, outer suburbs. They're, it's not something that they choose, they're forced into it. So often the people who use uh the Golden Mile, I mean, before COVID and before tourism, it was largely tourists and civil servants, many of whom come from, you know, Wairepa or the hut. That's fine, but we, the people who are actually paying tax, you know, rates here, would like to use it too. And if you don't have fabulous good health, for example, where I live, um, if you want to catch a bus, you have to go down quite a long flight of steps, quite a long flight of steps, or go down that very narrow winding road with no footpath for ninety percent of it. It's bloody dangerous. Do I need to spell it out? I weigh fifty two KG. Can you expect me to carry a bike that weighs over forty KG? And where do I put it when I get into town? Where am I supposed to put it?
Kia ora, um, thank you, Angela, for coming in today and sharing your perspective with with us. We appreciate you taking the time to do so. Thank you. Um, now I'd like to welcome Marion Leighton. Um, Dr Marion Leighton is from Doctors for Active Safe Transport and um Dr Leighton is joining us via Zoom. So we just wait for, who's to join? Councillor Matthews on Zoom? Kia ora. They've got five minutes.
So I'm talking today on behalf of Doctors for Active Safe Transport, and I know I've been um speaking to you a few times in the last few weeks. And I'd like to share with you today a um story, a true story that happened to me and a patient of mine at the weekend. And I'd like you to consider this story when you are developing your overarching transport strategy. We've just heard about people who are unfit and unhealthy. Seventy five percent of these diseases are lifestyle diseases. Now, I want you to imagine being thirty three. Most of you can remember being thirty three, some of you will have to imagine it, but it's young. It's uh, you're world's your oyster, you've got a young family, maybe a primary school kid, a kid in preschool, you've got a partner, you work in town full time. You take the car in and out of town because you've got free parking in your suburb, and it's cheaper to park in town than it is to take the bus for two of you, especially if you've got a drop off. About four years ago, my patient went to his doctor not feeling so well and was diagnosed with type two diabetes, that preventable and curable lifestyle disease. His GP said that he should take more exercise and eat a healthier diet. He did try cycling into work once, but it was really scary and he got a shit time at one of the lights from one of the car drivers who abused him. Um, and so neither he nor his partner have done it again since. He's also tried to eat a healthier diet, but you know what? Although he knows he keeps saying it, people in power don't really care. Um, after all, just a few weeks ago, they took away eight car parking spots overnight to make way for the McDonald's drive through queue. So that just uh gives a dissonance that we actually support unhealthy eating. Two weeks ago, he got a red spot on his foot. I want you to look down at your feet right now, councillors. I'd like to think that you quite, you use them a lot and you quite like them. That red spot got more painful and worse, and on Saturday he came into the emergency department, thinking some antibiotics might solve the problem. He was very surprised when I was very worried about it and kept him in, maybe antibiotics, high dose. On Monday morning, it was getting worse. The surgeons came and on Monday afternoon, he had his leg chopped off. He's never getting that leg back. He's thirty three. You have our health budget and you are calling it transport. When people are whinging that they're gonna lose their parking spot outside their house and it might be a bit inconvenient, this is what you're dealing with. Next time you're at an angry residents meeting and they're whinging all about their inconvenience, I want you to look at your feet and to think about that missing leg. Diabetes is killing our young people. They're losing their legs, they're losing their kidneys, they're having strokes, heart attacks. It's not just seventy, eighty year olds. And we need better public transport and better ways of people actively getting in and out of town to prevent this. Fifty years ago, people didn't have diabetes, not in the young people. And they do now, and it's our urban environment amongst other things that are making this happen. And you have a responsibility for that leg and for everybody else out there who is currently unfit or a bit unhealthy. And you've got to sort this out, and active transport is one of the main ways of doing that. And I'm gonna leave you with that and maybe you open up your questions. Thank you.
Well, nama hei, um, Dr Leighton, eti wero. Um, thank you for um putting that in front of us and in helping us understand the implications of the wider issues. Um, we do have a question from Councillor Rush.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr Leighton, and thank you very much for sharing that um with us. I guess my question to you is really, I mean, maybe a bit of background, I grew up in Hawks Bay, big wide streets, flat, much better weather. Um, and yet the cycle uptake was not necessarily any different to what it is here, probably a little bit better, I guess. Uh, I totally agree with you in terms of exercise and so on, but it really is down to personal choices. And I'm just wondering if um, you know, we can do as much as we can for people, um, but they don't necessarily want to take up the opportunity to either use a gym or play a sport or even cycle to work.
So all the evidence, Councillor Rush, and I can, well, I'm happy to be and give you evidence, is you need to make it easy for people and commuting, active commuting, outranks all other forms of exercise. It is way better than joining a gym or taking up a sport. You need to be commuting, not using your private car. And the city needs to allow that to happen, it needs to be harder to drive and easier to walk, cycle or take the bus. And um, and now of course, it's happening to need a facility parking space, or certainly the likelihood of him losing the rest of his leg in the next five to ten years is very high. So we do need spaces for people who have to have it, but we need to prevent them from getting into that space in the first place. The evidence is people will come. Also, they may have had flat streets that didn't have protected cycle lanes, and it still doesn't.
Well, Kia ora, um, Dr Leighton, thank you for coming to, well, coming to through Zoom to um koredo with us today. We really appreciate you taking the time to do that and um, yeah, thank you. Kia ora. Um, right, we now have Paula Warren, who is um here in person to um talk to us, who are koredo. Welcome, Paula. Um, so we've got five minutes and um if you don't want to allow time for questions within that, that would be great. The timer's just up there if you wanna refuse. Kia ora.
Thank you. Um, I've written quite a long submission, but I thought I would just focus on one issue, and that's the drop off tradesman parking. So I've just come from a meeting with the contractors for the Samaan High Commission build, which is next to our apartment, and I'm the liaison person for our apartment block. There is no parking for any of their workers anywhere in my local community. All of our spaces are either residents parking or coupon parking. There is not a single drop off pickup space. There is not a single disabled parking space outside the Botanic Gardens. There is nowhere that my visitors can come other than parking on the footpath. And if you go through my part of the town, you will see that that's where they all are, that's where the courier vans are, that's where the businessmen are, that's where the tradesmen are, that's where the jumbo bins are, that's where the piles of gravel are. Everything ends up on the footpath because there is nowhere else. So when I met with the Samaans, I said, I will give you the use of my encroachment for your short term visitors, because otherwise we will end up with them on the footpath. You need to change most of the car parks in my neighbourhood into short term parks that can be used by people who need to be there. I'd also like you to look at something which I don't think I did put in my submission, but I've been thinking about it since. And I'm quite happy to go to NZTA and have an argument with them if this is not legal, but I would like to see us have a lot of parking spaces which can either be used for five minutes or for people with a disabled sticker. That means we can provide a lot more disabled parking across the city without actually having those spaces unavailable when disabled people don't want them. Disabled people need a lot of possibilities, but those possibilities are not used particularly often. Um, and so combining disabled parking and, you know, the courier drop off, the five minutes to pick up my mother type of activity would be a very efficient use of those spaces. We have to provide for the things that need to happen. And I'm sorry, but commuters do not need to be in my neighbourhood. Tradesmen do need to be in my neighbourhood. Thank you.
Kia ora, we have a partay from Deputy Mayor Frey.
So um, one of the suggestions um that another submitter made was that residents parking could be available to tradesmen with a pass, so you could purchase a pass um from the council or uh online, that would mean you could actually give your tradesmen the ability to use residents parking. What do you think about that?
It would work if we can book it. The residents parking in my area is just, it's just where people store their things. They don't move them very often, they just store them there.
Right. Thank you for that feedback. Councillor Pannett?
So two questions. Um, what do you say to more well off residents about their parking needs? Because that is one of the block's points, we're very familiar with your neighbourhood. Um, and also, what, the, the whole point of the rationale of the policy was that essentially the commuter parking in a city burbs was sort of a park and ride? So you're saying you disagree with that, just wanted to clarify?
Well, I'm kind of quite close to the middle of town, so, you know, it's, it's, it's not a, a big walk from where we are. Um, if you really wanted to provide park and ride, put it a bit further out and, as the previous submitter said, getting to do a bit more exercise. But frankly, they ought to be parking and riding at their local railway station and taking the train.
Kia ora. Thank you very much, Paula, for coming in today to koredo with us. Um, right, so now we're going back to Zoom, zooming into Zoom, and we welcome Payal Rammetu, um, who is going to um share their thoughts with us. Welcome, Payal. It's good to see you again. Kia ora. And so you've got five minutes.
Cool. Um, my thoughts are a jumble, hodgepodge of things. I read through things and thought, this is what I wanna say. Um, one of my big things is micro mobility. No, thank you. I don't want, I hate, I hate it, I hate it when my foot gets run over by people on these scooters. I don't have a smartphone, so obviously I don't use one, so maybe that's my gripe. But um, I don't think on that, on that hierarchy thing, there's like walking, and then I noticed the next one had cycling and micro mobility. Yes, just cycling. No, thank you to micro mobility, thank you very much. And then it had public transport. And then you have car sharing and taxis. Can we put taxis over car sharing? The reason I say this is car sharing is a lot more unregulated than taxis. Taxis have cameras in there, there's a lot more regulations. Car sharing, I think, is great, but actually we're not getting more car, like there's still more cars coming into the city and things, right? So I say put taxis over car sharing, um, give rid of the micro mobility. Um, and then, yeah, my thing is, I'm saying boom, micro mobility. The other thing is, um, I'm a disabled person, um, not physically disabled, but I'm a disability. On the next thing, like, I guess I'm just, um, I find this sentence really, really scary. I'm not doing a lot of hearing, but it's really scary when someone is going past you really fast and you don't know which way to move or what to do. People aren't very polite or kind enough. It's all really hard here. So, um, and then, you know, it's kind of, you're all gone. Would you like to ask me any questions?
Um, Kia ora, Payal, yes, we do have some questions. We've got a question from Councillor Paul.
Kia ora, Payal, thank you for your awesome submission, um, like your last one, um, really cool. Um, I just was wondering, when you're talking about micro mobility, do you, are you including um e-bikes in that category as well? Cause those hills are terrible.
The bikes, cause bikes aren't allowed on the footpath, so I feel a little safer around bikes. And also bikes, quite often people aren't um stupid with their, I guess they don't just leave them lying around the footpath on the ground, things like that. I noticed that online they were um like dedicated to micro mobility parking places. And I'm just like, no, just put in like cycle lanes and encourage people to bike, cause it's safer, faster, yeah, whatever. Yeah, I'm just, um, I hate this goodness.
Oh, good, thank you.
Um, Kia ora, I have a question. Um, I'm just interested with your um theory around taxis versus car sharing. Just that obviously we, we're aware that taxis still often only carry one person a lot of the time, you know, the, apart from the driver as well. And obviously car sharing does remove vehicles from the road, cause there are, you know, more people and fewer vehicles. So what, what is your um thinking around, it was around the safety, was it, of the, the, um, yeah, do you wanna explain that just a little bit more about?
Yeah, definitely. So at the moment, if you are like an official driver, you need a P licence. So taxi drivers, you have to have a criteria, you need to have a P licence. But taxis have cameras in there. Yes, you're probably right. You have one, sometimes only have one person. But I still think taxis is a system that has like come along, that's got regulations and things. Car sharing is a new thing, like Uber or these kinds of things, they're not so regulated, they don't have, um, there's this, there's just like, that system has developed over time, and I would rather that people are making that better and work better and like build car sharing, like ride sharing into that system that already has like protections on it, than like go for this one, that's like a private company that's not like locally owned or anything like that.
Kia ora, um, do you have a partay? Um, Councillor Conde has a partay.
Kia ora, Payal, um, thanks for your koredo on the e-scooters. I hadn't really thought about how they might impact on those of us who are a bit neurodiverse um and experience the world a bit, a bit differently. How would you feel about um the e-scooters if they were in the bike lanes with all the cycles and not kind of on your space? Would that make it easier for you?
Yeah, you're, so just a quick point, um, if you're referring to a group, it's neurodiverse. If you're referring to an individual, it's your advantage.
Thank you.
That would really help. Um, yeah, but, yeah.
Kia ora, thank you, Payal, for um sharing with us today and for taking the time to um to come and talk to us about this, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Um, so now I'd like to welcome in person, um, Kevin Snellgrove, who's um here to um talk to us from the Transit Group. Yeah, it was on the calendar, yeah. Um, Kia ora, sorry, um, Kevin's submission is on, yeah, on page one hundred and seventy five, if people are wanting to follow that.
Thanks, guys.
And Kevin, you've got five minutes.
Five minutes, thanks, guys.
It goes quickly.
For the opportunity to talk to you. Um, we operate the bus and coach part of the industry. Uh, we're in urban, we're in tourism, and we do long distance intercity, and we also do uh group tours. Uh, we have seven customers that we deal with, there are seven top customers, bring thirty thousand people a year into Wellington, who usually spend one or two nights. Most of those people are around the two hundred and fifty dollar a night spend. Um, and the issues we have with these is just trying to get parking outside hotels. Um, one is to drop off and pick up, and the other one is to actually park the bus at night, so that the drivers can actually have accommodation as well. Um, the next area we have problems with is the attractions when, around the city, whether we're dropping off at the cable car. Um, the group series will actually be competing for the cruise ship market, uh, trying to get to the same spots on the same days. And we get the cable car, Old St Paul's, the Rose Gardens, all those places jammed up. And for us, it's just a matter of how we can actually work together. They're all problems, but it's how we can all work together to solve those problems. And um we wanna spend time with yourself, the bus and coach. And we want to spend time with yourself, the bus and coach industry, to see how we can make it easier for the people coming to Wellington. It's the service they get when they get dropped off at a hotel or dropped off in an attraction is what makes them think that it's either a good place to be or it's a city that's not really open for business. So that's what we're looking for. We also operate the intercity brand that runs throughout New Zealand, connecting all the cities together. And we stop at the platform nine Wellington Railway Station. And I doubt that that's the place where we should be really dropping our people off. It's windy, it's cold and it's not really very inviting. And we just wonder what the city can actually do to help a brand like InterCity to actually have a better place to drop the passengers off, meet and greet. InterCity bring about a hundred and fifty thousand people a year into the city. About thirty percent of that is tourists, so once again, it's, it's, it's how we sell the city. So that's what I really want to say and here to happy to help, but ask any questions.
Kia ora, we do have some partai. We've got a question from councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, thanks for that. Can you suggest any, I totally agree with you about the point you've made around drop-off place. Can you suggest other places that you think would be better? Because I think you're right, we do send a really important message about the city and also public transport.
Yeah, there used to be parks down around the Wharf area where drivers could actually park their vehicles up at night. And there's parks in town where they can actually park their bus up from seven PM at night through until seven AM in the morning. The trouble with that, a lot of the tour groups don't actually leave until seven-thirty, quarter to eight. We've got like the James Cook up on the terrace here. We've actually got to back those coaches half on the footpath, half on the road and reverse them down a busy street with tourists standing there ready to climb on a coach that have travelled from Europe to our lovely city. And that's the sort of area they get to. For, for me to suggest a place to park, it's just probably making better parks and getting some parks that are closer to the city. I think it's something where we've got to sort of sit down as an industry, it's not just our business, but it's everyone that comes to Wellington. And it's also the events that we have. I sort of worry about our nice new event centre. It's actually an island for a bus. When a bus goes to drop people off, we can't drop it off on the same side of the road. So whenever we drop someone off for that nice event centre, they're going to have to actually cross the road. It's all on the wrong side, the new one we're building, yeah. So it's all, it's all about the sport and I think it's like the bus industry needs to sort of have some sort of input when we do these things. Fantastic, you know, it's what we really need in Wellington, but when we drop people off, there's how the hell are we going to get them from this side of the road to that side of the road?
Yeah, that's really important, Kia ora. We've got a partai from councillor Anion.
Kia ora, thank you for your submission. My question was similar to councillor Fitzsimons. How have you found in terms of the placements of the car parks in terms of safety for drivers and amenity, things like loose stops or places to have a coffee break or some fresh air? How are we managing that at the moment through the city and, and do you see some other spots around the city where you'd like more access to?
For our urban operation?
Yeah.
For our urban operation, we're just going through the ERA Act at the moment where drivers have got to have a 10-minute rest break every two hours. And we're dealing with the regional council who are obviously dealing with you, trying to find locations where to put toilets. And there's, there's probably about eight places that we do need those toilets and that's something the regional council is working closely with us on. And then once you put these toilets in, you've then actually got to manage to keep them clean and tidy. Then I'm out of here by the looks.
No, I was just, I was confirming you said eight and not eighty. You need eight places, is it?
Yes, just, just in the Wellington city, we've also got the Hart Valley and Piru that we've got to deal with.
Oh gosh, kapai. Thank you for coming in to share with us today.
Not long, five minutes, is it?
Yeah, it goes really fast. Thank you, Kia ora. So Noma, we've got our last submitter today, Alex Gray, the vice-chair of the Automobile Association of Wellington District. So Noma, Alex, thank you for coming in today. And so as you can see, five minutes goes really fast and if you do want to allow some time for questions, that'd be great.
Kia ora councillors, I'll be brief because you've had a whole stack of submissions and I'm the last. So you've got our submission in front, it's fairly brief. I think our main comment is, you know, we appreciate the time that's been put in putting the whole policy together, but it was obviously written pre-COVID. And a lot of things have changed since then in terms of number of people in town, empty shops. I parked on a meter park the other day and I got a sticker from Wilson Parking saying twenty-five percent off. The demand for parking in some places has actually gone down and yet in this proposal, you're talking about putting up the price of parking. My wife doesn't park, does no longer shops in Wellington City. She goes to Kilburne, Lower Hut, Porur, Johnsonville because she doesn't have to pay for parking there. So the suggestion that increasing parking charges where demand is high will result in more revenue and more turnover, I think is actually false because people have got other choices. They can either shop elsewhere or they can take an Uber. So just think carefully about the proposal to raise parking prices because if, if you want to attract people to shop in Wellington City at this point in time, I would suggest you either want to hold prices or even possibly lower them to attract people in the short term. I guess the other comment I've made is, you know, due to COVID, there's more people working from home. So we've actually said that due to the unknown long-term effects of this COVID pandemic, we don't think council should rush into making any decisions on parking policy in the short term. Let's see how things settle down before we make any major decisions. We're also talking about the policy not being, having a clear strategy. There are contradictory statements such as supporting business wellbeing, but then also suggesting raising parking charges for the second hour. And as I say, I've made my comment about people going elsewhere. The other comment we came up with was that if the council proposes to significantly reduce on-street parking, they need to provide an attractive alternative for, if commercial businesses are to survive. And by that I mean something like a park-and-ride system where people can park on the edge of the city for nothing and get a bus at either low or zero cost into town to shop. Because otherwise, as I've given you the example, my wife, she shops elsewhere. And the classic example, of course, which you're probably aware of is Melbourne where they've got that tram that goes around the periphery, which as far as I know is still free and you just park your car and jump on the tram. So we consider the parking plan currently for the CBD to be a bit premature unless alternative arrangements are provided for shoppers such as park-and-ride. We support measures to reduce bus travel times in peak hours, but we also suggest improvements like getting rid of cash fares on the buses because I've been on the bus when somebody turns up with a $20 note and the poor bus driver hasn't got change. And we also support legislation forcing drivers to give way to the bus when it pulls out so that the bus gets a very clear run. And you've got my proposal, I'll look forward to any questions because I think you need a rest.
Councillor Fitzsimons.
Hi Alex, thank you, very interesting. Now, I'm a member of AA and I know other councillors are and I just was wondering how you determine your policy position on, on things that you've, like what you've outlined just now?
Yeah, fair question. Where there's plenty of consultation time, Flora, we have actually done email surveys of Wellington residents. We did that for Transmission Gully. And the time that was available for this, that wasn't available. So there are 12 councillors elected on the district council and we have, when there's only a short consultation period, we have to basically discuss the proposal and come up with an answer.
Thank you for always coming and fixing my battery.
But I had a flat battery as well.
Kia ora, councillor Pennett.
Actually councillor Fitzsimons sort of asked my question. So are your members, how representative are your members, do you think of the broader Wellington community? Have you done any demographic analysis?
That's a good question. On our council of 10 or 12, we've actually got three active cyclists. In terms of age, we're looking for younger members, but we actually have difficulty in attracting people below probably about a 50 age group to actually join the AA council.
Also just meant your members generally?
Members, oh, members.
All your members?
Ah. I would have to go into some detailed statistics on that. Our membership is growing. We have 200,000 members in the Greater Wellington area and a large number of them join not just for the benefits of flat batteries and breakdowns, but also for other benefits like free eyesight tests at Spec Savers every two years and stuff like that.
And the magazine was right, holiday ideas.
That's a good question. Fair question.
Kia ora, councillor Conde has a partai.
Kia ora, Alex, one of your points was that, that, you know, we shouldn't rush into anything and we need to make sure that we've got attractive alternatives in place before we start removing car parking. And I guess my view here is that we've got a bit of a chicken and an egg situation. If we want to improve bus priority and cycle and provide other options, we need to remove car parking to be able to do that. But then we're being told that we shouldn't remove car parking until we have the other options.
I think it's, you've got to look at that on a case-by-case basis. The AA has already said they support removing private vehicles from Lampton, Key area of the Golden Mile and part of Willa Street, not all of it, because the route from Bullcot Street round to Mercer Street, it's the only way you can get across to that side of town. So in some areas, we support removing private car parks. In other areas, we might have a contrary view, but certainly the Golden Mile, I think is actually overdue for removing private vehicles during the working day. Happy with that answer?
Kia ora. Thank you Alex for coming in and being our last submitter today. We appreciate you taking the time to do this. So councillors, I just have to do the formal bit where we get to press a button. So I'm just going to move the motion that the committee receives the information and that we thank all of the oral submitters for the time that they take to come in and kooro with us and answer our many partai. We really appreciate the time that they take and councillors, I appreciate your patience and your questions and yeah, working hard. So now we will, I need a second there. Councillor Conde. Okay, so now we'll vote. Voting is open. Did you almost vote against? Councillor Matthews is, can I accept them? That's good. Some of them. It looks like them all, okay, we'll see what happens. So that is carried and now kua mautu tenei kui, we're going to stand etu motakarakiya. Unuhea, unuhea, unuhea ki te uru tapunui. Kia watea, kia mama, te ngako, te tinana, te waeroa i te aratakatu. Koea ra e rongo, kaeria akeki ranga. Kia watea, kia watea, ai ra kua watea. Kia ora, thank you for sticking it through, people who are here, very impressed. Another meeting. We've got one straight away, Flora, I think. Haikona, see you later, take care. It's been nice seeing your smiley face, Kia ora.